Thursday, March 6th, 2025. The time is 7:46. We'll begin with roll call.
Ms. Pryor?
Present.
Mr. May?
Here.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Ms. Zelinski?
Here.
Ms. Ruth?
Here. I'd also like to point out that Ms. Zelinski is an alternate member. She is going to be filling in our empty spot this evening, and she will have full voting powers. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to have Ms. Pryor read our ZDA responsibilities. This is going to be important to listen to because you'll know what our powers are and aren't, what we can and can't do. On tonight's agenda, we have a use variance, which is my first use variance. They're not very common because you have to prove a lot to get a use variance following the state's guidelines. The variances for areas are much easier to get. So she will explain the differences for you so you know.
All right, so use variances. The zoning board has the authority to grant use variances, authorizing a use of the land, which otherwise would not be allowed or would be prohibited by the terms of the zoning code. Applicants must show that applicable zoning regulations and restrictions have caused unnecessary hardship. In order to prove such unnecessary hardship, the applicant must demonstrate these four things, and they have to have all four things or else we cannot grant the use variance. So the applicant is deprived of all reasonable economic use or benefit from the property in question. The alleged hardship relating to the property in question is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood. And the requested use variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And lastly, the alleged hardship has not been self-created. So those four things are what we need to test for a use variance. I'm going to talk about area variances next. There's five things, and you don't need all of them. The zoning board has the authority to grant area variances from the area or dimensional requirements outlined in the Town Zoning Code. In making its determination, the board shall take into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted, weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. In making such determination, the board also considers these five things: whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting the area variance; whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance; whether the requested area variance is substantial; whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district; and lastly, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. And we will test those things tonight.
All right, thank you. So the public notice was as read. The ZDA will meet at the Town of Boston Town Hall on Thursday, March 6th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. for the work session. The planning board will be followed by the public hearing in the courtroom to hear the final petitions. Open petition number 631, Dean Hoag, 8387 Boston State Road, seeking a use variance to operate a car wash. Petition number 633, Cynthia McCloud, 8159 Boston State Road, seeking an area variance to add a new 14-by-30 carport. Petition number 634, New York, Boston, Two LLC Buffalo Solar Project, 7832 Fedec Road, seeking an area variance of 384 feet for the south side and 375 feet for the north side for a new proposed solar array. So we do have an open public meeting currently for Mr. Hoag. We have a letter from Robert Reed. I'd like to read into the public hearing. "Respectable Chairman Root and conscientious board members, petitioner wishes to purchase and renovate an existing car wash at 7387 Boston State Road, Hamburg, New York. The existing building and property are part of an estate sale for the late Raymond Miller. Property is at present a non-conforming use in an R2 district constructed approximately in 1989, and a use variance is required due to new ownership and non-conforming use from Town of Boston zoning Article 14(c)(1), Local Retail Business District, to an Article 15." Good thing I can read Roman numbers. "General Commercial District use of a car wash is permitted in Section 123-7818. Mr. Hoag is aware of the work needed and plans to apply for and conform to all applicable codes and Town of Boston laws. He has plans to add lighting and is aware of the town requirement per Section 123-120b. Respectfully, Robert Reed, Assistant Code Enforcement Officer." We have also a recommendation from the planning consultant, Sarah DeJardine. Regarding petition number 631, Dean Hoag is seeking a use variance in order to rehabilitate and operate the existing car wash facility at 7387 Boston State Road. The consideration of a use variance requires that a secret review be conducted and a secret determination be issued by the ZDA, negative or positive. A negative declaration would indicate that no potentially significant adverse environmental impacts have been identified. A positive declaration would indicate that the ZDA has determined that the proposed action may result in significant adverse impact and therefore will require preparation of an environmental impact study." And we also have a letter from the estate of Raymond Miller. Dear members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, we, Deborah Phillips and Molly Myers, are the duly appointed executors of the estate of Raymond W. Miller, which includes property located at 3787 Boston State Road. We are writing to formally designate Dean Hoag the prospective buyer of the properties and authorized representative in all matters related to the application for a use variance for the car wash. As the authorized representative, Dean Hoag is granted full authority to act on our behalf in preparing, submitting, and presenting the application for the use variance to the ZDA. This includes responding to any questions or requests for additional information from the board attending meetings and addressing any concerns that may arise during the review process. Please direct all communications to him. And this has also been notarized, signed, and assigned." And from the executors. All right, from the estate of Raymond Miller, dear members of the ZDA, I'm writing to formally request a use variance to reopen the car wash located at 7387 Boston State Road, a property that is part of the estate of the late Raymond Miller. This property has historically operated as a car wash, although current zoning regulations do not permit this use under the existing classification. To settle the estate is essential that the property be sold, however the sale is contingent upon the approval of this use variance. In support of this application, I would like to address the four criteria required for the approval of a use variance. Number one, proving inability to realize a reasonable return. The estate of Raymond Miller cannot be settled without selling this property. Given that the building was specifically constructed as a car wash, repurposing it for another type of business would involve significant prohibitive costs. Therefore, the property cannot be sold unless it's approved for its original use as a car wash. Number two, uniqueness of the hardship. The hardship presented by the current zoning classification is unique to this property. The building was originally designed and built exclusively as a car wash with the approval of the Town Planning Board. The current zoning does not reflect this specific use. Furthermore, redeveloping the site would be prohibitive given the unique geometry of the property. Impact on the character of the neighborhood. Granting this variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The site operated as a car wash in the past, and the intent is to reuse the building for the same purpose. Currently, the property is closed down, creating an unused commercial property in the business quarter. The purchaser plans to fully remodel and revitalize the property, transforming it into a beautiful, state-of-the-art car wash that will be an asset to the community and enhance the town's appeal. One of the purchaser's current car washes is located in Orchard Park at the intersection of Route 20 and California Road as a representation of the aesthetic appeal. Number four, non-self-created hardship. The hardship was not self-created. The property was built many years ago, and subsequent zoning changes have rendered its original use non-compliant. We did not contribute to or create this issue but seek to resolve it in a way that benefits both the estate and the community. We respectfully request that the Zoning Board of Appeals consider these points and approve our application for a use variance, allowing the property to be sold and the estate to be settled. Thank you for your time and consideration." All right. So, Mr. Hoag. All right. Can you step up? We're going to have you step up to the microphone, state your name and address. This goes for everybody that's speaking tonight. And we have this in front of us with the figures. Could you walk us through this just so that we understand it?
The figures.
For the financial piece of it? Because we have to prove financially.
Okay. Maybe we'll have Steve Phillips?
Yes.
What, the estate of Raymond Miller? X on the law?
You're not X.
So I put the cost nails together on looking at the property, how it's unique shape. And I did not get so much involved into the actual town requirements on parking spaces, green spaces, and so forth. But if you would look at the size of the property and realize that, you know, once you get into demolition and trying to build something that would meet the current town zoning regulation, it would be a very, very small piece of property with the return of investment just nothing to be there.
Okay. So in this-
It is a high-shaped lot that's on the corner on the intersection.
Yeah, right. So the financial piece of this here, so I guess the illustration, you're using an example of if it wasn't a car wash and it had to be demolished for another purpose. You're using an example of an office building, I take it?
Yep.
All right. So you go through what the cost is to buy the property and then demolish it, and then paying for the site engineering, architectural drawings, the utilities in the building site work, and the general contractor. And then what the cost would be for a 4,000-square-foot office building at $90 a square foot, which I'm assuming is the going rate?
Yes.
And then building out the interiors.
Right. It wouldn't matter. That's just a general interior, not custom for any type of city office.
Okay, so at that point, if you were going to do that, it would come up to $1,156,200. And then you get into annual expenses, which would be the taxes on the property, mortgage payment, insurance, property maintenance. And that would be totaling $137,877. And you'd be realizing an annual rent income of $48,000.
Correct. It's such a small- It would end up being such a small office building.
Right. All right, whereas... So do you have financials for what it would cost to renovate the car wash?
Well, the problem with the car wash is it was never built to be- It's not insulated. It's not. It's just an open base. There's no bathrooms in it. There's no utilities in it other than the gas line to run for the heater. That's all that's there. There's just nothing there. You're not going to renovate that. Slab-on-grade. There's no insulation on the floors.
But if you're refurbishing it as a car wash?
Correct. That would be what Mr. Hoag.
Right. So do you have, like, financials for that?
I don't.
No. I'm behind you. No, I didn't know I needed that. No, I don't have big work for that.
As far as what you're going to invest into it to bring up to code and up to, you know, monitor it. It's still going to be a car wash, you know, wash base.
I have an ask. I don't know, as we are- We have to make a negative declaration if we were to grant this, et cetera. But one of the things we have to do is we have to consider the environmental impact of this particular car wash on the environment, right? So I, as a board member, don't necessarily feel qualified to talk about the environment. I'm not an environmental scientist. I don't know. Is there- Do you have information? Or could you get us information on the environmental impact so that we could, with confidence, either declare yes or no? This isn't going to make any type of environmental impact on the character of the neighborhood and all that?
So are you requesting a secret?
I don't think I, you know, am.
No, we don't have to. We are the lead agency on this, so we have to declare whether or not it's a positive or negative declaration. So, you know, does anyone feel confident? I mean, Laura, is that... This is my first use for a use variance.
So under CECL is looking for the environmental impact on the neighborhood and character around it.
Right.
Are you changing that?
No. No, I guess we're looking at more the environmental aspects of, you know, the foam, the sole, you know, is the drains all good, you know?
Well, I'll have to do all those steps.
And that all comes under code compliance.
You have this already in your other site and everything, right? I mean, it beats all of their environmental impacts that they have at your other car washes. They're not going to let just this water run out?
No.
Right.
You have collection systems and-
Right, okay. I was just looking for more information, so.
Yeah, it all goes in a- It's all tied into this Boston sewer system.
Sure. There's oil separators, grit separators, and all the chemicals that we use to wash the cars are all biodegradable, right down at Erie County Sewer. We have four car washes, and everyone's the same way.
Yeah, pretty much. They're all set up the same way.
Yeah, they are.
Wash base and that.
They must have some sort of criteria you have to follow anyways for most of those others.
Well, with this car wash, if you approve it, I'm going to have to get Erie County Sewer there. They're going to go over it, and they're going to inspect everything, make sure the size of the tanks are up to standard size right now. And they may not pass. They could be too small. But Erie County Sewer will-
So they'll tell you what you need for it?
Oh, they're going to tell us, yeah. Yeah. And I'll be required-
That's all on you.
Yeah, for sure. And they won't give me- They won't let me get a building permitted in the C of O without, you know, bringing all that up to specs.
Right.
Meaning their inspections.
When we had a fire in Orchard Park, believe it or not, we had to start over again. Everything had to be changed because now the building was gone, and now things weren't up to specs from 20 years when we built the building. So I'm sure things are going to happen like that there. They're not going to let us get away with something. There's no doubt in my mind. I know the building inspector will guide us in the right direction also.
No, thank you. That's the information I was looking for as far as what environmental information you had that you could share with us. So I appreciate that.
Would they help to submit an environmental assessment form? And the VA obviously didn't even look at that?
I think it was with the original-
It should have been with the original.
With the original application. It's here. It's here. Yeah, right here. The only question I had, I guess, off the short environmental assessment form, was with the traffic, but that was answered at the first public hearing or at the other forum meeting here. Because it's not like they're going to be lined up. And then we did ask for a diagram of how everything would be lined up. And that was provided with the cars and the way you're going to stack the cars and everything, and the entrance and the exit. And I know that Code Enforcement Officer Reed said that he was also going to- That he also spoke to you about the lighting and that you're going to follow all the regulations and compliance with that. With, like, warm lighting?
No.
All right. All right, any other questions?
Is this going to be open, like, 24/7 or?
It is, yes. Yeah.
And you also mentioned that you were going to talk to TOPS and see if you could somehow incorporate the parking lots and-
Yeah, I did. I stopped over. I had a phone call in, and no one ever got back to me at this point. And I talked to a few of the neighbors, and they had a couple of concerns, and we talked about them, keeping our dryers inside. I'm not going to mount the dryers on the outside of the building, which I know isn't... If you look around some car washes, you see the dryers outside?
Yeah.
And they're noisy. Keep them inside, big difference. And I wouldn't do that to the neighbors.
Nice. Very good. All right. Anyone else from the audience like to speak? Okay. You guys have any other questions? You have any questions for us?
No.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Zelinski?
Yes.
Ms. Ruth?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve petition 631, the use variance. Conditions to approval: That the property is incapable of earning a reasonable return on initial investment if used for any of the allowed uses in the district. Actual dollars and cents proof must be submitted, which it was. We have a statement here in our packet that results in a deficit if it's used for anything other than what it- the car wash. That the property is being affected by unique or at least highly uncommon circumstances, yes. Also provided in our packet that the-
And also that it was a car wash under a previous zoning case.
It was also a car wash already and under a previous zoning situation. The only reason why there's a variance needed is because of change of ownership. That the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood? No, it's a vacant building now, and it was a car wash before, so I only see future good things. The hardship is not self-created. That would be correct because... Because of the zoning change.
I'd second.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Zelinski?
Yes.
Ms. Ruth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So you'll get a mail to give the-
All right, moving on. That was petition number 631. We're moving on to petition number 633, Cynthia McCloud, 8159 Boston State Road, seeking an area variance to add a new 14-by-30 carport. From our Code Enforcement Officer, respectful Chairman Root and conscientious board members, petitioner wishes to construct a detached 14-by-30 carport in front of their residence between the residence and two accessory structures. The present accessory structures are approximately 300-plus feet from Boston State Road. Side lot line will be 15 feet to edge of structure and farther than the primary residence. Variance sought from Town of Boston zoning 123-125, more than one accessory structure. Since the acreage is 1.9 acres, the maximum square footage of accessory structures is limited by Section 123-136(a)(4). The total of the existing garage and shed structures are 792 and 160 for a total of 952 square feet. A variance for 123-136(a)(4) would need to be granted also. If branded, recommend a limit of no additional accessory structures be placed. We do have a letter from... We have a letter from Sarah DeJardine, our planning consultant, regarding petition number 633. Cynthia McCloud is seeking an area variance for a proposed carport. The proposed action is classified as a Type II action and therefore not subject to review under CECL. I was looking for the letter from Ms. McCloud. Very short, sweet. Dear board members, I'm requesting a variance of the 840-foot square foot limitation on total accessory building size to allow a construction of a 30-by-14 carport over the south section of the driveway near the existing house. Sincerely, Claudia Jensen. All right. There it is. It's right on top of it. All right. So is it Cynthia McCloud or Cynthia Jensen? Or are they the same person?
It's Cynthia McCloud and Claudia Jensen own the home together.
With, I'd probably eight... Six. I think the drawing has six poles.
Okay.
With a roof.
Metal roof. Metal roof. I saw that, yeah. I stopped up there to take a look at the site. Aren't you going to... With it being in front of your house, you're kind of going to kill your view, aren't you?
There is no view. Well, there isn't. I mean, it's looking at our shed, actually.
Yeah.
And when the RV is there all the time, so the RV is already blocking.
Oh, it's already... Yeah, I see.
Your trees are right there. Those are going to be removed or are you trying to work around them?
No, we're just going to... We're going to work around them and possibly take just a few branches off.
I know it's really close to that driveway there.
We already had to have all the trees trimmed because the RV is 11 feet tall. So they were... It's already clear more than enough for the RV and the structure is only like a foot and a half taller than the RV is.
How long is your RV?
25 feet.
And you don't want to take any of your other buildings down, right? You're leaving the other accessory buildings?
It's just a lot of buildings on a fairly small parcel. That makes me pause a little bit here. There's no way you could make do with taking down one of them that you have?
No, really not. There's already a concrete driveway there. There's just something that has been walked around, so it's already not space... It's not green space. It's concrete.
You couldn't put it on the side of your garage? I mean, it'd be less to build, less to cost.
It wouldn't really be feasible because we'd have to pour concrete and take some trees out. It's... It's really... We'd have to actually take some trees out just to get the RV in there.
Is there a concrete pad there already?
Where we're going to put the carport?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
It was snow when I went. I couldn't see.
It's all concrete where it's going to be. The driveway is sort of like a fort when you get up to the top.
Right.
So there's two driveways, one on the side where this is going to be and one on the other side where we can park vehicles. And I don't think anybody can even see it from their house. It's... You know, we're pretty isolated back there.
Right. Right. Is there anyone else here to speak behalf of this application?
Or did you speak to any neighbors? Did you maybe walk around a little bit and say, hey, would you... Talked to anybody?
There really isn't any.
There's really...
There's like a hair salon place. I mean, there's nothing there.
The hair salon place, we actually have a problem with one of the pipes down there. And she said, can I feed mine and be yours and I will fix the pipe. So we have a really good relationship with all the other neighbors. We come to their son's birthday parties and, you know?
Yeah.
It's...
It's good to hear. I like to hear that.
It's great.
I like when neighborhoods get along. It's great. A lot of times they don't. All right. All right. What's your pleasure, folks?
I would close the public hearing.
All right. Second motion. Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Zalinski?
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Jen, help me with that. Six months.
Yes. Excuse me.
All right. Petition number 634, New York, Boston. Is that 2... Or LLC? Buffalo Solar Project, 7832 Fettick Road, seeking area variance of 384 feet to the south side end and 375 feet for the north side for a new proposed solar array. This is from Molly Messenger, project manager. Dear Mr. Murphy, please accept these submission materials as a request to be on the January 2nd zoning board of appeals agenda for two area variances needed to construct a large-scale solar energy system. The RA district requires a 500-foot setback from all property lines. Requested reduction is specifically for the north property line, a reduction from 500 feet to 125 feet, and the south property line, a reduction from 500 to 120.3 feet. Number two, special use town of Boston code requirements 8C double I requires a maximum of a 50-acre lot size for the installation of a large-scale solar project. The parcel according to the boundary survey prepared by Nussbaum and Clark, Inc., is 73.8 plus or minus acres, thus the need for a 23.8-acre variance for this project. And then it lists all the submission include materials that were included. This is from Mr. Reed, our code enforcement officer. Respectful chairman Root and conscientious board members. Item one, New York, Boston, 2 LLC seeks a variance from local law 2019, number five, known as Town of Boston Solar Law, section 123-128.37C triple I, which sets a minimum setback at 500 feet to an adjoining residential district. The petitioner seeks a setback from the south side along the parcel boundary with the property address of 7900 Fettick Road, 116 feet, and on the north side along the parcel boundary with the properties with SVL numbers 225.00-2-1.12, 210-3-22, and 220-3-26 of 125 feet. While the proposed use is consistent with the Town of Boston Solar Law, section 123-128.38A, with issuance of a special use permit, it is not consistent with 123-128.38C41. This requires a minimum setback from all property lines bordering a residential district, specifically the north property line border, 125 feet, and the south property line border at 116 feet of a 500-feet minimum. The 500-foot setback is provided the site plan at the west side. It appears from the site plan submitted that the solar arrays might be redesigned and shifted closer to the west side, south of wetlands, and closer to the 500-foot setback provided at the site. Item number two, New York, 2 LLC seeks a variance from local law 2019, number five, known as Town of Boston Solar Law, section 123-128.38C2, which sets a maximum size of 50 acres. The planned project will require a 73.8 acres or an increase of 23.8-acre variance for the special use permit. Due to planned scope, wetland stream, and a gas pipeline location, this would be allowable. So the code is 500 feet south side. Actual is 116 feet. The variance required is 384 feet south side. And then code is 500 feet for the north side. Actual is 125 feet, so the variance would be 375 feet for the north side. Respectfully, Robert Reed. From our planning consultant, Sarah DeJardins. Regarding petition number 634, New York, Boston, 2 LLC is seeking area variances for the south side setback and north side setback of a proposed new solar array to be located at 7832 Fettick Road. This request is not subject to seeker at this point because the town board previously issued a seeker negative declaration on the solar project itself. I would like to make a motion to open this public hearing.
I'll second it.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Zalinski?
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
I have some emails to read into our public hearing. This is Eric Garan, and I live at 7919 Fettick Road, Boston. I'm writing to vehemently oppose the solar project at 7832 Fettick Road. This is happening in every rural town and pretty much the residents in those towns are constantly against the solar farms, yet the towns usually approve them. This needs to stop. We live in a farming country, community, and it needs to stay that way. Personally, farmland should stay farmland. If the owner isn't a farmer, they can lease it to another farm close by. Or here's a thought: Let nature take its course and let the plants and trees grow for wildlife. Now I understand we need tax base and that requires development and residence. So if some land gets developed into some homes, that's okay too, as long as the lots are large enough to maintain a country field. Personally, I think a minimum of five acres. But the absolute last thing that should be considered is solar farms. Even if they're off the road and out of sight, I don't want them in my community. It's been proven, regardless of what the scam artist salesperson from the solar companies say, that solar isn't as efficient as you may think. Just light wind isn't that effective. But these companies find people with land, throw a bunch of money at them, and we get into this situation. It's just greedy companies and even greedier residents causing this problem. The owner of this property should be ashamed at what they're trying to do. There are so many possibilities for land, and they've chosen the least favorable. To the board, please do what's right and stop this from happening. Keep us in the beautiful town that it is and keep your residents happy. Don't let greed prevail. Also... We will be here till midnight. After everything, okay? I set some ground rules in a minute here. All right. From Richard T. Lack. Dear Boston Zoning Board of Appeals, I, Richard T. Lack, would like to express my strong opposition to petition number 634-9, New York, Boston, 2 LLC, Buffalo Solar Project, seeking an area variance at 7832 Fettick Road. My farmland neighbors the proposed solar farm property on Fettick Road. I feel this variance will create excessive changes and negatively impact the area around it by, number one, habitat loss, wildlife on my property will be greatly impacted by construction, clearing of the land, and trees for the solar farm, fragmentation of ecosystems. This solar farm can lead to displacement of the wildlife populations on mine and my neighbor's properties. Number two, health, safety, and well-being concerns. Risk of toxic chemicals used to manufacture panels leaking on my property, noise, glare, and fire risks from the solar panels. Number three, reducing the value of my property. Number four, does not fit in with and attracts from the character of the Town of Boston. The Town of Boston's comprehensive plan states that the preservation of the existing agricultural land is important to maintain the rural character that attracts many people who are interested in making Boston their home. Once the tapsoil and its nutrients are stripped from the solar farmland, there's little chance of reverting to its original use for the future. Once it's gone, it's gone. I'm asking the Boston Zoning Board of Appeals to protect our quality of life, stop industrial solar from destroying our thriving community farmland, wildlife, and property values by voting no on petition number 634, area variance at 7832 Fettick Road. I believe this is from Susan Sandy. As homeowners in the town of North Boston located near the proposed Fettick Road solar project, we hereby express our strong opposition to the proposed construction of solar panel farm in our neighborhood. We believe that the installation of large-scale solar farm in our community will have several adverse effects that must be carefully considered. The primary concerns are as follows: Environmental impact. A proposed solar farm will require the clearing of significant tracts of land, which can lead to habitat destruction, loss of biodiversity, and disruption of local ecosystems. This development is counterproductive to our community's efforts to preserve green spaces, farmland, and protect wildlife. Fragmented habitats can interfere with wildlife movement and migration routes. Visual and aesthetic concerns. Solar panel farms are industrial in nature and can be tracked from the scenic beauty of our community. The visual impact of vast expanses of panels can diminish property values and alter the character of our neighborhood farmland, making it less appealing to current future residents. Agricultural land use. Many of the proposed sites for these solar farms are on land currently used for agriculture. The loss of agricultural land not only affects local farmers' livelihoods, but also reduces the availability of locally grown produce, which is essential for our community's food, security, and sustainability. Additionally, if local zoning laws or land use prioritize agriculture, the conversion of farmland to a solar farm could violate these regulations. Property values. Numerous studies have shown that the proximity of large-scale solar farms can negatively impact property values. This potential deprecation poses a financial risk to homeowners and may reduce the overall economic vitality of our area. Health and safety concerns. The installation and maintenance of solar farms may pose health and safety risks, including potential EMF exposure and the risk of fire from electrical faults, toxic chemicals leak out from the panels. Please take a serious note, there's a creek that runs nearby the proposed site, feeding into 18 Mile, and eventually Lake Erie. These are... There are residential ponds nearby as well. Furthermore, for health and safety reasons, authorities recommend residences maintain a distance 1.2 miles from a solar farm. These risks need thorough investigation and transparent communication in the community. Unpredictable technological changes. The technology for renewable energy is constantly evolving. What may seem like an efficient use of the land today may be replaced with a better solution in the future, leaving farmland permanently altered for a technology that becomes obsolete. Noise and light pollution. While solar farms are relatively quiet, the operation and maintenance of solar panels, like the inverter noise, could introduce unwanted noise pollution that disturbs residents and wildlife in the area. The installation of large solar panels could lead to increased glare and light reflection, which may disrupt the lives of people and animals living nearby, especially during the early morning and late afternoon hours. Farmland taxation. For the land over the shift from agricultural tax rates to commercial rates may increase the cost of holding the property, which could impact the profitability of the solar farm. We request that all voices in our community are heard and that the decision-making process is transparent and inclusive. Thank you for considering our concerns. Please preserve our quality of life, the history of the area, the farmland, and natural beauty we cherish, noting that this project is not being proposed in the Zoning Board of Appeals neighborhood. One more note, as I prepare this email, I have a live view of the House committee discussing America's energy reliability. Oil, hydrocarbon, and nuclear are leading to discussion in America's future of dependable energy needs, especially with AI advancing the energy transition. How ironic. Susan Sandy, Mayor Road. And this one is from PJ Zeitour and Caitlin Ebling. To what may concern, I'm writing this letter in opposition of granting variance for the 17-acre... It's not 17-acre. ...solar farm to be constructed on Fettick as a member of the Boston community. I strongly oppose any project that would harm the visual landscape and alter the character of our community. I believe that there's a way to have a solar farm that does not devalue neighborhood properties and ruin the rural scenery. Adhering to the Boston Town Code will ensure that the solar panels do not approach upon neighboring properties' views. Ideally, a tree line would also be planted to keep the natural beauty of our rural setting. All right. Well... Where's the solar, folks?
We're here.
The company. Who's representing Delaware River?
We're right here.
All right. People with the boards.
Yep, people with the boards.
All right. Could you step up and state your designation?
Molly Messenger for Delaware River Solar.
And Henry Zomerfeld, counsel from Hodgson Russ. So I think before we talk about the project and what's before the board, I think it's important to frame where we are legally and where the board is going to go with evaluating the application. And then we'll talk about some housekeeping items with respect to the application and some things that I think need to happen before the board can actually render a determination. So a couple of things. The town board already issued a negative declaration. So I know that there are probably a number of people here who are going to raise a number of concerns. Many of those probably already articulated in the letters and the emails the board just read. Those are not relevant to the consideration tonight because the town board already said there's going to be no environmental impact by this project. What the board is charged tonight is whether the request for the area variances is appropriate. And typically, the town would look at the criteria in the town law, the five factors that we heard read earlier. That's not the standard to apply to a solar project. As submitted in our letters to the board, the solar project is subject to what's known as the Public Utility Variant Standard. It's a less onerous standard because this is a utility and there is a necessity for electricity in New York. There's also a push in New York by state policy under the CLCPA to increase renewable energy throughout the state. Recently, just a couple of months ago, the Third Department, which is an appellate court in Albany, affirmed the idea that solar projects, renewable projects, are subject to this standard. So what does that mean for all of you? What does that mean for the review that you will conduct? It means that all you have to determine is whether or not there is a necessity for this electricity, which we know there is, whether Delaware River Solar is a company that develops these projects, and whether there is no alternative for the project in any other mechanism. In other words, is it feasible for it to go somewhere else? And the answer simply is no. This is an irregular parcel.
Go to your backyard.
This is... This is an irregular parcel, and it can't be configured in any other way without this variance. So under the PUV, the Public Utility Variant Standard, the board is to grant the area variance. So I wanted to just frame legally where we are. I understand that there are a lot of concerns. I understand that there's a fair amount of opposition. But that's not what the board is to look at tonight, not only because of the negative declaration, but because the courts have already made this rule. The second piece that I wanted to discuss briefly before turning it over to Molly, I think there are some impediments or things from a housekeeping legal standpoint that need to be resolved before the board can act. The first is, this is near both a municipal boundary and an agricultural district. But certainly both of those would trigger a GML 239M referral to the county. And I think that's been recognized by the town, but I don't think that has actually happened. So that review, as the board, of course, is familiar with, that has to go to county planning. There's the 30-day window for the county to respond. If the county responds...
And Henry Zomerfeld counsel from Hodgson Ross. So I think before we talk about the project and what's before the board, I think it's important to frame where we are legally and where the board is going to go with evaluating the application. And then we'll talk about some housekeeping items with respect to the application and some things that I think need to happen before the board can actually render a determination. So a couple of things. The town board already issued a negative declaration. So I know that there are probably a number of people here who are going to raise a number of concerns. Many of those probably already articulated in the letters and the emails the board just read. Those are not relevant to the consideration tonight because the town board already said there's going to be no environmental impact by this project. What the board has charged tonight is whether the request for the area variances is appropriate. And typically, the town would look at the criteria in the Town Law, the five factors that we heard read earlier. That's not the standard to apply to a solar project. As submitted in our letters to the board, the solar project is subject to what's known as the Public Utility Variance Standard. It's a less onerous standard because this is a utility and there is a necessity for electricity in New York. There's also a push in New York by state policy under the CLCPA to increase renewable energy throughout the state. Recently, just a couple of months ago, the Third Department, which is an appellate court in Albany, affirmed the idea that solar projects, renewable projects, are subject to this standard. So what does that mean for all of you? What does that mean for the review that you will conduct? It means that all you have to determine is whether or not there is a necessity for this electricity, which we know there is, whether Delaware River Solar is a company that develops these projects, and whether there is no alternative for the project in any other mechanism. In other words, is it feasible for it to go somewhere else? And the answer simply is no. This is an irregular parcel.
Go to your backyard.
This is, this is an irregular parcel and it can't be configured in any other way without this variance. So under the PUV, the Public Utility Variance Standard, the board is to grant the area variance. I wanted to just frame legally where we are. I understand that there are a lot of concerns. I understand that there's a fair amount of opposition. But that's not what the board is to look at tonight, not only because of the negative declaration, but because the courts have already made this ruling. The second piece that I wanted to discuss briefly before turning it over to Molly, I think there are some impediments or things from a housekeeping legal standpoint that need to be resolved before the board can act. The first is, this is near both a municipal boundary and an agricultural district. But certainly both of those would trigger a GML 239M referral to the county. And I think that's been recognized by the town, but I don't think that has actually happened. So that review, as the board, of course, is familiar with, that has to go to county planning. There's the 30-day window for the county to respond. If the county responds, you consider it. If the county doesn't, you can move forward. Here, because it is only an area variance, the fact that it's near an agricultural district is irrelevant because that's an exception under 239M. But what is not an exception is the municipal boundary, and that is the Town of Eden boundary. Now, of course, depending on where exactly this might be cited, it might not be within that 500-foot boundary, but in an abundance of caution, we would ask the board to make that referral. The other aspect, and this came up in code enforcement letter, so I'm not entirely clear, and I did speak with Molly about this, as far as the 50-acre aspect, it seems that code enforcement is saying we are in compliance because the public hearing notice referenced only the two 500-foot setbacks. So if the board is going to act on the variance, I think the public hearing notice when we come back does need to refer to that 50-acre aspect. So I just wanted to frame that for the board. I'll turn it over to Molly unless there are questions on those legal issues to talk more about the specifics of the requests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Henry. The Delaware River Solar has been in front of the town board for a while now. As everyone knows, we've done quite a few studies. There's been a full historical, or a Chronicle Heritage study on it for the shippo, for the historical preservation, and that came back with a no-impact letter. We also have been dealing with New York State Department of Agricultural Mitigation. They have given us also a no-impact letter as far as any mitigation procedures that we need to do moving forward. If we do have to do some intense screening, then obviously we'll follow all the mitigation procedures for NISAM. We have to actually be in touch with them as far as our application with them, but we did receive a no-impact letter from them as well. What the one letter was referring to from seventeen acres, the actual fenced-in solar field itself is only seventeen acres on that 73-acre parcel. So we do have, your zoning code includes the panels, not the fenced-in area. So we're actually only with the panels covering seven acres of the property, which is well below the 30-acre density requirement that's there. We do understand that screening is obviously one of the biggest issues for everyone. This particular solar field has at least three neighbors that we pointed out in our visual study that are 65 feet below the solar field in elevation and are about 1,200 feet away from it. Screening for those three neighbors that are going to see it is going to be a little bit harder, just because the elevation changes in the way that is. We are no stranger to screening. We can put a row of evergreens across the entire front. We can talk about different screening that might be suggested from the board, but just because of the nature of the land, it's going to be very difficult to screen from those three individual neighbors from the visual study. If you had a chance to look at that, it actually showed color-coded what people could see from the road and what different neighbors could see from that area. Let's see, as far as everything else, we will be, we did submit a full stormwater prevention and pollution plan, but we haven't done any responses back yet as far as comments from the engineer. I'm not sure if the board has received anything either. We do know that we need a gas line crossing. We are in touch with them and we are doing a site visit in order to meet with them, in order to get that land crossing that we need for the additional driveway. All this information was sent to the fire department. We have not heard back from the fire department yet. What we like to do is have full conversations with them prior to the site after construction, even being energized. We like to meet with whatever fire department would like to come, emergency services, so that we can show them where the shut-off switches are, how the field works, how to gain access, what to do in the event that there's an emergency. We do all of that prior to the solar field being energized, because that's all part in the emergency plan that was submitted to the board. We are, there are northern long area bats in this area, so there is a clearing limitation as far as when trees can be cleared. A lot of this solar field is in the fields, but there is some that's in the wooded area to the west. And so that means that we can't clear between March 31st and October 1st. So there's a very short clearing window because of the northern long area bat is here. We did get an engineering letter regarding the actual site land, which we've sent all the information back to the engineer, and I think that that's, everything has been crossed off. We can't submit the speeding permit yet because the switch hasn't been approved, so we can't look forward with any of that permitting. I think those were the major points as far as what the town board had asked us for and the different questions that have come back. I don't know if the board has any further questions on any of the reports or any of the information that we sent. Oh, and the decommissioning bond will be set. I know there's a question about decommissioning. In your code, you actually have reasons for decommissioning, and there is reasons for decommissioning if it doesn't produce, I think this code is 12 or 18 months. The board, the town can't ask the solar field to be decommissioned if it isn't producing. It can't just sit there and not do anything. The, the town will get a bond with a 2% escalator. The decommissioning bond will be presented from our engineer and then approved by your engineer, your attorneys, or whoever you deal, befit. And then there is a 30-year escalator, so every year there is a 2% escalator on that bond. I've seen in other towns that they do a five-year lookback, so every five years they revisit that bond just in case inflation has changed, material prices have changed, different things have happened. This system is a single-axis tracker system. It has less material than a fixed-tilt system. Single-axis trackers are on one H post, they're not on multiple triangular ballasts, so there is less material. The panels that we are proposing are 90% recyclable. They're glass, copper, and metal. They don't leach any materials into the ground. They are, there are recycling facilities being built in New York State and around the country. Anytime we can get U.S. content instead of shipping it from overseas, we do try and get U.S. content because there are more factories popping up in the country.
How often is there that it's available from the States?
We have two projects, actually, that have U.S. content, which is kind of nice. It's a demand situation. If we can get it at the time of construction, then we'll try, then we'll get those first solar panels instead of overseas. But the overseas panels have to meet the same requirements coming into the United States as we produce here. But there is U.S. content being built and being installed currently, so that's a great thing. As far as the panels, that's how they're made and manufactured.
Just have one, one other point to make, just again in framing this. We're seeking only an area variance, and I'll state the obvious for the benefit of everybody here. That's because we are in allowable use. We don't need to use variance because this is permissible. So again, the letters before you, the comments I'm sure you hear, I understand those concerns. We don't need to necessarily get into a ping-pong match of who's right and who's wrong. A lot of those things don't matter because this is permissible. So where it's going is totally allowable, subject to the restrictions that we're seeking relief from.
I understand that, but I still think residents have the right to speak.
Absolutely. And don't mistake my comment. I'm not suggesting that you manage to hear comments that are here, that they say here, that they're entitled to be heard, but I just want to make sure.
It's impacting them.
I understand, but again, from a legal standpoint, it's an allowable use. That obviously will guide.
I understand that. I think we all understand that. I'm actually, I think I'm going to let the residents ask the questions, and then anything that they don't cover, I'll follow up with the ones that I would like answers to myself that they might not have thought of because they haven't got the reins of material like I have to read through. So, but with that being said, I would ask that everybody, when they come up, they state their name and their address clearly, and please don't try to repeat each other because we will be here at midnight. Offender done that, and that will happen. So, so as, and did everybody sign in out there? Before you came in, there was a sign-up sheet. Did you sign in? If you haven't, please sign in so that we also have that for the records to show how many people were here.
Do the different sheets make different?
I'm just gonna leave this here so that in case anybody wants to point anything out.
Excuse me. Excuse me, can you explain?
All right, step up, number one.
Thank you. I'm Brad Muscato, 5886 Sherwood Road. Can you explain the different sign-up sheets because there's different names on each one?
It's just showing the petitions that are here, so if you're here for the solar, you would just sign one.
Yeah, it's all the same sign-up sheet, it's just multiple pages.
Thank you.
All right, step up.
That was easy.
Does the board, oh, sorry, David Norwicky, 5124 Sherwood Road, 14150. Is the board, is legal representation possibly outside firm to look at, look at the town attorneys here or the firm itself?
We have our ZDA attorney and we also have outside counsel.
That's what I'd like to know. A lot to go over that the gentleman there, attorney, I'm looking for.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, very quickly, I'm Richard Bankert, and I'm from 4786 Ensel Road in Eden, Illinois. I'm also a veterinarian, and one thing, I know you said the use permit is not in question, it should be, because these solar panels, and I'm aware of the advantages and disadvantages clearly, so I'm, but I'd like to speak out for the elements because it's been known, these solar panels produce heat, they, considerable heat, they also kill animals that are in the area. And I know that a lot of people recognizing that, are putting up these big fences around there, so that's something that's probably going to happen if people complain about it like I would, but it's going to be unsightly, and this might be something that will disturb the environment for the animals, but also it would be exciting for the people. So that's, and I'm ready to go, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Jeff Prisanti, 7806 Fettick Road. I believe we have three minutes, is it? We'll try to keep it short. First off, thank you guys for being here, and I have to thank all of these people, all of my friends that are following up, neighbors that are here, putting their time up here for us. So you guys, forgive yourselves, a round of applause for fighting this fight, and I thank you guys so much for all this. But what I want to say is something that Dr. Paul Zaransky, I hope I pronounced that correct, from the Zoning Plan Board said. He said Delaware River Solar, you people are basically just going after low-hanging fruit. You've got all these hang-ups here that you're trying to justify. We have the issues with crossing multiple waterways, the wetlands, the endangered species, the impact on the community, all of these things. I could keep going and going and going and going, but I don't want to keep us here till midnight. So, the other thing that I'm sure we're all upset about is that Delaware River Solar thinks they're going to come in here and just steamroll this town. Did they talk to any of us? Did they have any consideration for any of the things that we want? No, no, I didn't meet any of these people, nobody reached out to us. It's not their home, it's our home. It's our home where we live, and we don't want it? And they just say, well, too bad, we're going to reference this, we're going to reference that. No, that's not how it works. Our town does not cater to you people. It doesn't work that way. It's our town, it's our home, and it's not here for you. So you can say this, you can say that, there's other places to go. Maybe there's state brownland, maybe there is areas along interstate possibly, okay? All things to consider. Other areas, the town Concord actually just shut one down because this solar farm that they shut down did not align with the town's vision of their community and the use of the farmland. This is very, very, very useful farmland that we have here, and we can't just let it go for these people to make a profit on. They're promising us little things, 5% off our electric bill. I got my electric bill, one from the summer, I think it was $80. 5% off of $80, what is that, four bucks every month? What's that going to get us? Barely a gallon of gas? They're going to try to bribe us with that? What's that going to do with our home values? What's that going to be for the long-term health effects? There were so many issues that were raised, and even when these people came up and spoke and told us about it, they said that they can't go anywhere else. That was one of the, come on, they can't go anywhere else? There are so many other possible locations for this. They talked about all of the difficult things that they're going to have to address, the elevation changes, they're going to have to put all this screening, bridges over waterways. This site is so far from the road, they're going to be running these, this is from, I believe, the Delavan New York Solar Project, they're going to be running these along your home, 50 feet, I'll give you bonus one, 50 feet from, from a property line. I don't think that that has a really positive impact on people's homes. That doesn't look good. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, this one, this site involving cutting all these trees down, the endangered species, there are so many, so many issues here, and you can say that we're going to screen this, we're going to screen that. There are neighbors of mine that are good friends, that I have been to their house multiple times, and you could build an 80, 90, 100-foot berm, and you're still going to see this. It's, it's, it's not a good site, and like Dr. Paul said, they're going after low-hanging fruit. They not once acknowledged anybody here as far as the impact that it's going to have. They think that they can just come in and steamroll our town, our board members? Doesn't work that way. And I appreciate all you guys hearing all the facts, and I hope that I'm presenting the facts and laying them out there for you on behalf of our neighbors. I'll leave it at that, but there's a lot more. Oh, actually, you know what, I probably should bring one more thing up. Let me throw one more out there. The only reason that we're hearing this case, and I'll put this out for the board members just in case you guys aren't aware, the negative declaration by the town board, they looked at studies that were conducted by people of Delaware River Solar. These studies, we would love to see those studies, and we actually are going to see those studies. We foiled that, and we are going to see what all was done, because there's some red flags there. We would have loved to see an independent agency do that, somebody who was not biased, somebody who maybe didn't know somebody, because where there's smoke, there's fire. There is some serious doubt that was raised there. I'll leave it at that. But anyway, thank you guys for all of your time. I appreciate it. And I appreciate all my neighbors and friends here, being here, spending hours and hours and hours of their time trying to fight this, and you guys are all great, and I really appreciate having all of these people here as friends and neighbors. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bob Kielak, 7900 Fettick Road. I'm one of the residents that border up like this property where they're asking for this huge variance. I'm definitely against this thing. First of all, I'd like to thank all you for doing what you do. I know it's a big-paying job, but anyway. So anyway, there's several issues with this. I don't believe anything of the crap that this guy is telling you. I mean, some of these towns can, projects on the big 94-seat projects, yeah, they can come in and tell the town zoning board what they're going to do, but this little project like this, they're supposed to abide by all the codes and rules of the town. I don't know where this guy's getting his baloney from, but it's bullshit. Anyway, I'd like to talk first about property values. Everybody on our street in the area there, their property values are going to go down. Some of the people, a lot more than others. Myself, my wife, June, or Jay Collard and Lynn Collard, and the Harder property, all them properties have got visual view of these back fields that are going to see the glare from those solar panels. And that glare is very, very intrusive, especially when your houses are built up on a hill looking down at these fields. There's no way she's going to build a berm and plant a bush and think she's going to block out, she's crazy. But anyway, that's one of the big things with you, they're not going to stop that. And then another person, so our properties are all going to be affected drastically for our property values, but Jeff Prisanti, his house is going to be 50 feet from these poles going all the way down his property line, from the front yard all the way down his property line. What do you think of that? Would you like that in your front yard? I don't think any of us would.
Oh, and Bobby, how are those solar panels, how do they look? Are they covered with snow now?
Yeah, they're all covered with snow, so I'm sure they're really doing a really good job.
I like those poles.
Yeah, they do beautiful poles. Anybody wanna see it? You can pass it around. Yeah, this is gonna be right in his front yard, less than the width of this room. And they got the road 20 feet wide, right on his property line. Why don't they keep it next to the homeowner's property that is building this big project? Why do they keep it to the neighbor's property line? That's just wrong. So anyway, that's the property values.
Very nice.
And then we're gonna go to our quality of life. Everybody there has lived for years, we hunt there, we fish there, we camp out back, we boat in the ponds. That's all gonna be changed. There's gonna be no more view of the lake. From our house, we can see across Lake Erie all the way to Canada. We can see the windmills in Canada, the blades going around, and then when it gets dark, you can see the red flashing lights. We got a million dollar view up there, and now we're gonna have this intrusive, very intrusive glare from these solar panels. It's just, this is not the right place for this project. It's not big enough, there's not room where they're bringing it out to the road, that you gotta have all these poles right next to somebody's house. That is crazy. So, yeah, we, it's unbelievable. So, and can they guarantee that the costs of the Boston taxpayers aren't gonna have to pay for fire trucks, a foam truck, and equipment and training for the firemen? There's a fireman I hope here tonight that can get up, because he told me there was nobody that contacted the North Boston Firemen about anything. About what they need, trucks they need, equipment they need, and who's gonna pay for this? This foam truck would probably cost $500,000 to $1 million. Is Delaware River gonna buy this truck? I don't think so. And let's face it, if this thing wasn't government subsidized and paid for by the government and grants and stuff, this thing would never happen anywhere, because these things are a loser. They lose money, and the only thing that keeps them afloat is the free money that they get. And then we got the noise with the inverter. My house is over 1,000 feet from the road, so I'm gonna be the closest resident to hear this thing screaming in my backyard as I'm sitting on my desk. 70, 80 decibels. Well, when the wind's carrying, coming our way, believe me, you hear that noise really well. We can hear the train tracks and the whistle blow in Lakeview, which is 15 miles away, very clear, on a calm day when the wind's coming our direction. So the noise is definitely gonna be very bad for us. And like I say, we're over 1,000 feet back from the road, so. And can they guarantee us that we're not gonna hear that noise? Are they gonna guarantee us that we're not gonna see them panels throwing? And how about the farmland? Can they guarantee that after we're done with this land, ruining it for the next 20, 30 years, that it's gonna be viable farmland, it can be farmed, after their toxic solar panels are dripping goof all over the land? I don't think that's gonna happen either. I might have to, I wanna thank the poor people that sent the letters, and I'm just gonna do all them topics, they did a really good job.
Covered a lot of ground.
Yeah, they helped me out there. But anyway, this glare from the solar panels in our backyard, our property values diminished, because I talked to two different realtors, and I asked both of them, has anybody ever called you and wanting to buy a piece of property next to a solar farm? And they both laughed at me, because nobody wants to buy property next to a solar farm. And if you go to sell your property, you pretty much gotta give it away. That's why the neighbor to the south of me sold last year, people down on the corner sold, and now we got another residence selling his place, and he says, I'm gonna get out of here if this thing goes through, I don't wanna be here. Because he knows the writing's on the wall. But anyway, that's most of the topics I had tonight. This place, if they wanna go somewhere in Boston and Villas, there's a perfect spot up on Rice Road. There's 699 acres, a nice land, they could put it out in the middle of there, and have 400-acre solar farm, and it'd be beautiful spots. Nobody's view, nobody's backyard, it'd be a perfect spot if they'd like to know how to tell them where it is. But that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tlack.
Good evening. My name's Jason Collard, 7880 Fettick Road. I'm not doing E on my head, I just couldn't see. Bobby, kind of hit on the subject of property values, and I think it's eminence important for all of us around there. This is a money grab by one resident and one company, and as we alluded to earlier, it wouldn't even be there, the money wouldn't even be there if it wasn't for taxpayers. So, it's kinda disappointing that I'm paying for the demise of my own property. But I got thinking about it, the 690 acres that the county has, that Bobby alluded to. Why does the county have that one? They have it because collateral. They need it for when they take out loans. The county would never agree to put a solar field on it, because it would diminish the property value. So, why are we allowing our property to be diminished when the county won't even accept something like that? So, I just wanted to say that even a blind man could see this is a bad idea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
I've covered a lot when I did, so I'll just leave you my letter and just hit a few points. My name is Wendy Cicero. My husband is here with me, Michael, we live at 7847 Fettick, and we're right across the street from this. We are a little bit lucky in that we probably won't see the solar farm, maybe the very tips of it, but we will see all the infrastructure on the outside of the street. The big driveway, roadway that's going all the way down, it's 20 feet wide, I think 2,500 feet long. Some of the questions that I have is, who's going to maintain all that? Who's going to be checking on the solar panels to make sure that they're working correctly and that they aren't broken? Who's going to plow that driveway so people can get back there if there's an incident? Who's going to take care of the vegetation that's growing back there? I don't know, we haven't heard those answers yet. I have big concerns about our volunteer fire company, they're wonderful, wonderful people, but they're basically being pigeonholed. I mean, you don't fight solar with water. And if there is an incident back there, and say it would spread to something, to the trees or whatever, how are they gonna fight that? We had a huge fire down on Fettick where we lost a berm. And when they opened those hydrants, our lines blew. The berm wasn't saved, could it have been if the water was flowing? Maybe, we'll never know. But we can't even depend on our water system up there. So, it's, a lot of questions aren't being answered, and as a resident, we built our home up there almost 11 years ago. I'm originally from the other hill in Boston, and finally came back, which I'm very glad to. But we moved out of Lancaster so that we didn't have to deal with stuff. I wanted to come back to my farming community, you know, big lots, wonderful waters, but we're not on top of each other. And they're just gonna come in and steamroll us and make this project, which is not even, you know, it's considered large scale, but it's not compared to a lot of what you see going on in New York State. And so they're gonna make it fit, but they are also always infringing on everybody's rights that live around there, and that's very sad. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas Huddington, 5664 Meadow Drive. My family's been some of the founding people in this community. And I was approached, well, I heard a statement tonight about the fire company. I asked our chief, have we had any correspondence with anybody from the solar panel company? The answer was no. So I started looking into a little bit of this, as to what these solar panels can do. They produce carcinogens. There's a number of them. Some of them can kill you, maybe not immediately, but it does happen. Solar farm fires, some of them burn from 10 to 14 days. And as a fireman, we're not gonna put this stuff out. Once one of those, once one of those sites starts to burn, it's gonna burn until it's all done. So you gotta run off, you gotta take carcinogens. And it sounds like the majority of people in town don't really appreciate this. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Good evening. My name is Dave Ring, just bought a house at 8815 Rockwood Road in November. I grew up in the city of Lackawanna, I work in Williamsville, and I decided to move my family here to Boston, because I've always loved it out here in the hills. I did not move my family out here so they could live next to a solar farm. I don't think there should be solar farms anywhere in Boston. I'd like to recommend a location for the company, Bethlehem Steel Site in Lackawanna. Great spot to have a solar farm. But, you know, I pay the Boston taxes just like you guys, I don't want them anywhere in this town. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Name is Rick Boar, 7763 Fettick Road, across the street from the proposed project. This has been in my research since this started two years ago, and it never changes. So I went online today, and they recommend, this is by the World Health Organization, that solar fields are not to be built within 1.2 miles of a residential area. Nowhere, okay? As far as property values, anything within a half a mile and less or down is 7% reduction on the property. Like Mr. Tlack said, that I was at his house the other day. What a beautiful place. I mean, 1,000 feet back from the road, the view is spectacular. Right now, when these solar panels go up, I'm sorry, I could not live like this. This is absolute ridiculous. And another thing is, I have to ask the solar people, where the money is coming from for these green agendas? I've read, and I couldn't find it, and I know where it came from. Not to bring politics into it. No, let me go even deeper than that, okay? It came from the Biden administration, and you know where they stole the money from? Medicare, $260 billion for Medicare for the green agenda. Well, I'm glad that President Trump is in office, and number one, executive order, the green agenda is gone, okay? Not only was it 260 billion over, I forget what the years were, but the total equaled $330 billion coming off of Medicare. That's my retirement, and everybody else's too. We've worked hard to get to this point in life, and for this government to just keep taking and taking and taking with no consideration of us, it's just like, too bad, this is what we're gonna do. But I'm sorry, I just, I'm a retired union partner. I spent three years of my retirement building my home across the street from there. When this started, I was sick. I was picking trees down at 66-years-old, and I've gone through three surgeries within the last 15 months because of my work in construction. I was hurt, well, thank God, I'm standing here today so that I'm able to do this. So, that's basically all I have to say, this is absurd.
Thank you.
These people don't care. Come on. Let's bring Trump up, I'm out.
Hi, everybody, my name is June Tlack. I live at 7900 Fettick Road, I'm Bob Tlack's wife. Bob and I built our dream home in Boston 30 years ago, and we cut down all the trees, and we took the lumber and had it milled, and the oars made, and we built our home, it took us three years. We collected all the fieldstone and rocks, and we made a three-story fireplace. We have a beautiful, beautiful home that was our dream home, and over the 30 years, we've built an organic farm. It has nine gardens, I grow everything, I have fruit orchards, I have, I grow my own herbs. I'm a nurse practitioner for 40 years, so I make my own medicine, I have a still, I distill the herbs and make essential oils, and I make medication for, you know, now that I'm retired. I'm sickened by this. I mean, we have 30 years of sweat equity into this property, and there's no way, there's no way that they're gonna mitigate our view, because it runs right behind my pond. And you look over, you can see the beautiful Lake Erie. I have a beautiful pond, but you're gonna see that eyesore right in the middle of both, and there's no mitigation for that. Also, I have bumblebees, and bumblebees run on the same navigational pattern as bats do. And solar farms, and I have read ad nauseam about solar farms and their, and how they screw up birds, bats, bees, honeybees, not any other kind of bee, but honeybee, because they work on that navigational system. And what it does is, within three years, your hive, your colony will collapse. It's called CCD, Colony Collapse Disorder. And solar is one of the factors that contributes to colony collapse disorder. So, it's gonna affect my life in a huge way. I grow all my own food, my children, my grandchildren come up from Florida and California in the summer, and they spend summers with us, they homeschool. The backyard is our science field, it's our recreation field, we play, we work, and, you know, it's a beautiful life. And this is gonna change my life beyond recognition. I will not be able to stay. I also have been a nurse practitioner for 34 years, and I worked in cardiology, cardiomyic medicine. And I don't care what anybody says, electricity affects the heart. It affects the brain, it affects the central nervous system, and it takes 80 amps of electricity to stomp a heart. So, the other thing I wanna ask the solar company is, what do you do with the ground current? Do you follow the rules, the New York State rules on ground current? Because a lot of solar farms don't. And let me see, I'll reiterate what the rules are, and you can tell me if you follow them. It's a compliance with the National Electrical Safety Code, rules for ground current. And it's IEE 19 Rule 215B and Rule 92D. You must have either a tube filter on the inverter or a fiber system to stop stray current. And what stray current does is it goes through the ground, it can electrocute fish, it can hurt animals, just like that veterinarian said. We have a young man that's building a dairy farm less than a mile up the street. It diminishes the production of milk by 30%. It decreases egg production in chickens, and we're already short on eggs because of the egg crisis. So, this solar farm, it's small, and I think what they wanna do is get these variances so they can get their foot in the door, and then, God knows what else they'll put in there. Are they gonna put in a battery storage system, which is like a bomb, a lithium bomb? Are they gonna put that on our property next? And you can't put these fires out. You have thermal runway, and they just burn and burn and burn for days, and it sickens me. And, you know, I know that it already went past, and it's to you guys now, and you guys are just doing the variances. But when you make these, and when you consider this, as far as the variances go, this is gonna be 100 feet from my Christmas trees, from my pumpkin patch, and probably not 1,000 feet from my beehives. And, you know, we're screwed, we're screwed. So you gotta consider this, this is my life and my lifestyle, and if that doesn't factor in, because what this local law says is that to protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents and property owners of the town of Boston, and hereby enact the section to regulate the construction, maintenance, placement, placement, and solar energy system equipment in the town of Boston. The purpose of this regulation is to balance the potential impact on neighbors when solar systems may be installed near their property, and to mitigate, and they can't mitigate anything in the environment. So please consider that when you make your decision, and you give or don't give these variances, because it's gonna ruin my life. Thank you.
Thanks, June.
Hey, June, you forgot to ask her, she lives by a solar field.
I live by a 600 acre.
If we could stop the comments going back from the end of gallery, let's try and be respectful for everybody, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
But I'm David Wackowski from eighty-three twenty Fettick Road in Evermore. June covered on most of the stuff I was gonna talk about, the stray current. That's my son's building that barn there. He's the fourth generation and ninety-eight years on our farm. Proud of that kid for doing what he's doing, sticking his neck out, trying to business for our business. And these people are coming here telling us they can do everything they want on our town with a good chance that stray current could harm his livelihood and, you know, take his milk production down, that standard, see him go bankrupt because of something stupid like this. And I, you know, I hope you guys really take this into consideration and there's a lot of people in this town that they can harm a lot of, you know, we're one farm. Got John Zinn and Sandy Zinn. They got beef cows, they got horses. They got Geigers down in Boston, they got turkeys, they got hives, they got beef cows. You got Joe Holcher, he's got beef cows, he's got pigs. My nephew, he's got show cattle, high-dollar show cattle. And this can affect everybody's livelihood. They said within the three-mile radius of the, of the solar farm that this stray current can get out that far. And you're talking into East Eden, mammals are farms, non-mammals are up in East Eden Road, there's four hundred cows there, thousand, twelve hundred cows on Hart Road. It's just more than us. It's a lot of places there and, you know, I was really sickened to hear that man come up here and say we can do whatever we want, basically. Put it in your own backyard. You think it's so great, put it in your backyard. I'm gonna give you an address here if anybody really wants to go see what a negative impact is on the environment. I got a friend in Oleen. He owns a farm at twenty-one eighty-eight Windfall Road. There's a solar park, solar project by Next Ham and he farms approximately a thousand acres down there. And he said the property values around that solar farm have decreased significantly. Everybody that signed up for the reduced cost energy from that solar farm, they're seeing six hundred dollar electric bills now. There are known birds that will fly over or near that solar farm. It ruins the, you know, the wildlife habitat. Deer get in there and they pull fifteen deer, that deer out of there because they get in, they get dehydrated and die. Where is this any good for the town? So I'm asked, I'm here to ask, what benefit does that do for our community? Is there a benefit? Can the solar people tell us what is the benefit? No, the only thing they can tell us is we're gonna do what we wanna do, basically, in a nutshell and you guys live with it. No. It's up to you guys sitting up there, you know, I know it's got a little too, it shouldn't have gotten this far, but we're asking you guys to really consider it, really put some thought in, you know, and think about our little community here. Said we got young men's hopeful dreams on the line here, you know, trying to create things.
You're gonna make me cry, Dave, stop.
Killing me because of the possibility of what can happen, you know, and I don't wanna see that. Just because of somebody's money grab and somebody's, and that's all it is, is a promise that they're gonna get millions of dollars. We get letters monthly. Solar companies wanting to come into our community, wanting to take our farm. And the one thing is you can make, all of those, one sentence in there, you can make millions of dollars over the life of these things. That's BS. Two thousand five, I was approached by a bunch of landowners down around Cullen Center. U.S. Energy was drilling gas wells like crazy down there and they asked me, they come up to me and you can expect hundreds of thousands of dollars and all the free gas and everything and I said, no, I own gas wells. I know what it's about and, you know, you're, you know, you're, they're lying to you. So these people signed up anyways. Well, come to find out, some of the lease, some of the lease contracts stated that no royalties would be paid until the cost of the well was, you know, was paid back. So some of the landowners never got a dime for royalties and now the wells are all depleted so they're all drying up and they're calling me, what can you do? I said, I can't do nothing. You got a dry hole and you can't get nothing. But it was all promises. They bid on the promises and they got nothing. It's the same thing here. The solar companies will promise you the moon and they're gonna give you nothing. That man, like I said, you want solar panels, put them on your front yard in Louisville. Thank you for all the neighbors for coming up here and supporting this and just thank you guys.
There's just a couple of, couple of things that I was very, very curious about. We have the firm that sells it, who actually puts them in, who actually monitors. Is this all separate firms that we have to count on? I know how separate firms get very lax over taking, taking care of things. Second of all, are these heated solar, solar, solar pan, pan, panels so with a winter such as this? Is it actually gonna melt off? The government is not gonna put that, anything out, it doesn't put anything towards our town. If it is a heated grid, what is the cost? If it puts out to save order on, order on kilos on kilowatts, but takes two to melt it, now you've just gone down, down, down in the head. I told I, I really, really wanted to say.
Thank you.
Hi, Ron Yormick from Deanna Drive. I'm very familiar with variances, being that I'm in the middle of the construction down there on Deanna Drive. But it just seems like this project is too big for this plot of land where these variances are just enormous. It affects the neighbors immensely and actually the town doesn't want this. I mean, there isn't anybody here speaking positively about this project. I just feel these variances are just not right and I hope you see the same.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, sir, are you coming?
Yes.
Chalk chalk, we can with each other.
My name is Larry Stiller and I live on five four-five-five Keller Road. And I didn't prepare any statement and I wasn't planning on coming to this meeting. I am the property manager for the formerly the Rich May Farm, Keller, Fettick, which is not called, it's just, my brother-in-law owns the land, he lives in Chicago. There will be no solar farms or windmills ever on that property, you know, or controlled. Just wanted to mention that to the neighbors. And I also, by converting a little bit of my attention to Bob Tlak, I think you did a pretty good job on Keller Road this year.
Thank you.
It was a tough time this year for a change. It's been a different year, but we can expect this occasionally and you did a good job and thank you. I don't think people, I'm a chemical engineer graduate of SUNY Buffalo. I also have a chemistry degree from Kinesius College. I was drafted, went to Vietnam, spent a year and I was exposed to Agent Orange and I've just been diagnosed with a latent form of blood cancer because of Agent Orange. What I'm getting at is the aftereffects of emerging technologies such as solar, which this is, is not known at this time and all of the concerns mentioned here are yet to be realized in health effects from these operations. I then got a job at the DDC and spent thirty-five years of air pollution control with New York State. And I went around, I was an air pollution engineer and I went around the state with our team of testers and stack testers, garbage turning facilities. Oh, a great way to get rid of the garbage. There was one up at nine twelve, that's a little kind of, did you ever hear of dioxin? I think years ago you did and as a cancer causing agent, from the combustion of the garbage with all of the chemicals people throw away. You know, throw garbage, a couple of pieces of tissue paper from the kitchen table, scraps and those, the little bit of vegetables, oh, people throw their, benzene, garbage, contaminants from the garage, anything with, anyway, that is disgusting. I'm trying to gather my thoughts a little bit here, but I got really concerned when I heard the statement, we've got the use. We've got the use. It almost sounded like we can do this and whatever you say is just a lot of extra thrill on top of, well, we're gonna do it anyway. And I, I'm really concerned about that because I wanna live up to a few more years and I wanna be able to enjoy the rest of my retirement up here and enjoy my life with the rest of the people that I meet here. I want nothing more than a blizzard if I had, just a piece of light, I saw a bad here yesterday, the snow was so strong, he had to watch it and he pulled the window down on his truck to talk to him, just a piece of light if they give us water every morning, I'm gonna see the sunset if you go down to Keller Road on March thirty-first, right up to ten in the street to stop, and I wouldn't wanna have to be at Bob's house and look out on June twenty-first in the middle of the summer and see all these big fancy solar panels down there playing away, making noise. I'm a little bit agitated right now, so I can't gather my thoughts any better, but I just wanna say I'm very thankful for the opportunity to live in this community and to be able to learn about what people are really living like in a farming community. It's a fascinating story that Mrs. Tlak just told me about her life here. I guess that's about all I wanna say. I, I wanna again thank the board for listening to my comments and I just wanna ask one question. The property has a setback to it. Where did that come from? Why is that there? If there's a piece of property and it doesn't have a setback, we wouldn't be here talking. Is that correct? This property has a setback to do certain operations of it. So is there, just because the fellow says I have a use, okay, does that mean he has to do what? To get his okay? I mean, everything here is negative about it and what, what is there positive that he can add to it? That can give him the use that he thinks he can get despite the fact that the land calls for a setback? It was put in there when? Ten years ago, twenty, thirty? Why is that setback there? It's there for a purpose. That's all I wanna say and thank you very much for listening to it.
Thank you.
Bob Tlak, seventy-nine hundred Fettick Road.
Haven't I seen you before?
I do have a couple more things. One thing is I wanna know, once they destroyed our county roads coming up there, Mayor Road, Zimmerman Road, Fettick Road, are they gonna be responsible for fixing any of these roads? And the second thing is, didn't I hear tonight, you can't create your own hardships? What was that about? I can get the whole thing, but didn't they create their hardships as far, yes, didn't they create that by knowing they went to a piece of property that wasn't big enough? They created their own hardship. Right or wrong?
That's for the use variance.
Oh, shoot.
I'd like to pop a question over to our attorney. It was stated at the beginning of this petition that the area variance conditions to approval still don't apply, that there are less onerous, onerous conditions that, can you, can you give us some clarification on what we're actually able to do here if these five conditions don't apply?
Sure. Is this working? Is this working?
It is.
I'm Dwight Kania, I'm special counsel to the town for the review of this project. I'm Sean, I'm in Rochester, working this way. There, there is a different standard for these type of projects when it comes to a variance evaluation. There have been recent court cases, initially in Erie County as well as several others, that determined that these type of projects should be assessed under a public utility standard. There was a decision in December of twenty-twenty-four at the appellate division level, which is the middle level appellate court in the state, that affirmed one of those decisions, not the one in Erie County, but it was one in, I didn't know if it was in the appellate court in the ordinary. In that, in, in those cases, and in the one in the appellate court, the court indicated that a public utility standard should be applied to these types of projects and in that instance, they actually granted use variance. So I think the distinction here, obviously, it's an area variance in question. You had a use variance earlier tonight, that's a much more difficult standard to mean. In that instance, the court granted use variance. So this was allowing, essentially saying in that case, that excluded use in zoning district, agricultural district. Because it was considered a public utility, that it should be allowed under the variance in that instance. There are not many cases who, I would say this is probably one of the first cases that an area variance standard is applied to this. There was one case in one county where the area was applied, it was a lawsuit, the court in that case also applied utility variance standard. My interpretation of that would be that an area variance criteria that you have, it's five of them, it's a balancing test, you know, in its basic form. I think I would say the way to evaluate it is it's a balancing test, but there's, the scale is tipped toward the public utility. The logic behind that, and I'm just reiterating court's, that's not my opinion, is that there is, because of, in this, in this case with the solar project, because the state has certain renewable energy goals, certain needs for increased electricity capacity, that there's a broader benefit to the public beyond the immediate maintenance of health when it comes to these type of projects. Therefore, there's a lessened, a lessened standard for granting here and there. So in the, in the first instance, there is a verification whether this is a public utility. In those instances, it was a project similar to this called the solar project. There are state goals with respect to those. There are, again, this is the logic of the court as to why it's a public utility. There are limited locations they can go because of where things can be interconnected and economic there. The, the line of cases that were relied on in reaching this related to cell towers, so in those instances, they were considered public utilities. The location, the site didn't look very location specific because of coverage on other than photography, a similar situation here. Again, it's largely driven by the state goals for renewable energy. And in the site, the projects in certain locations, area interconnection, where the pots for doing so are below, you know, certain threshold such that the projects may economical. The topography of the land has the certain orientation, for those factors to be... The court case did indicate that it doesn't mean that aesthetic and environmental concerns are not considered at the local level, but it does impact the balance. There was an area declaration that has some weight in the overall assessment. But you also have things to evaluate, the impacts on adjacent zones, which are, I think, distinct from the state. So in evaluating these type of projects, if you look to why the five hundred foot setback is present, what is it intended to mitigate? Is it by being there? And is there alternative ways of achieving the same limitation that would otherwise be there for, if there was a viable setback? Any questions on that?
I have a question for the applicant, but it looks like we're...
The five hundred foot setback is to protect the farming community and to protect us. I mean, it was made because this is a farming community. This isn't an industrial zone, it's a farming community. And the reason the setback is, is to protect that. You want to change it, and we don't want you to change it. So we should have a leg to stand on. I mean, this is to protect us, and you're not protecting us. I mean, this is crazy. I don't know what else to say.
June, he's on our side, just seeing him.
Well, just what you were saying was upsetting me.
I understand, and I'm a territory clerk. My role is to advise on what is going. So that's... No, no, it's not, no reason.
I'm gonna wrap them talking, then have them...
I just wanted to say... Can one more question?
Sure, come on up.
Hi, I'm Lynn Pollard. I live next to the Tulak's at seventy-eight eighty Bettec Road. So we're definitely impacted. Our house sits higher, so like you said, any green screen will not affect it, you know, us not... We'll still be able to see everything because we sit so much higher. You're all welcome, come over to my house. I'm not sure what I'm gonna serve, but you know, you're welcome to come over and take a look. When you say the five hundred variance, I guess that's the whole reason why we're here. And that's, like June said, a leg to stand on. Now, that's just for the solar fence and field itself. It doesn't mean that that's also, though there's service road that they're gonna go down, right now that service road winds onto ours, goes back up. And once the survey's on, it'll definitely be on the other side. But with that said, what they have to go through is the culver pipes and stuff like that. This is the hundred acre, or a hundred-year-old farm that my grandparents had, that we now live on. So it'll be disrupted. It's not just a stationary barn or house that they're asking for a variance. The road is right on their property, the service line, and the maintenance of it, and the two or three, or however many years it takes to build it. So the variance is there for a reason, and it's not just, once it's there, it's in its little gated community under the, under the fence. It's, it affects that whole area and coming down between the houses. So I just want to put that in there too. So variance is there for a reason, and hopefully we do have a leg to stand on.
You mean, the code is there for...
The code, yes, the code, I'm sorry. Yeah, that.
And this road and those poles fifty feet from neighboring homes?
Right, and that's fifty feet.
That's part of the project too.
Exactly, that's not five hundred.
That's not five hundred, that's fifty.
So that road should be considered too, since it is so far off the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Blazey Hornberger. I'm here for my uncle, James Gervey Senior, who can't be here today. He's at seventy-eight, seventy Bettec Road. I just wanted to say two things. Better Business Bureau, they have an F. Everybody can look it up. Why is that? And why is it that every single town that they go to, they sue? Look at the town of Aurora. You still want to process?
You won, and then you came here because we were lower lying through.
Eden voted no.
But did you go back and build it?
Eden voted no. When I had talked to the attorney general, they already started suing. They went back and the town went, "Okay, well, we don't want to get sued. So let's go ahead and go on Easter Street."
They're bullies.
They are, girl, very much bullying people. Everything else I want to talk about has already been talked about, so thank you.
Thank you.
Phil Mistrada, eight oh six two Zimmerman Road, Boston, New York, one four zero seven five corner of Zimmerman and Keller. Just wanted to touch on some of the environmental impacts of solar panels. They, for one, they're trying to say that there's no environmental impact whatsoever. They got basically their use approved and said there would be no impact. Well, to touch on a couple other things, we've also know, we've also been told that asbestos was perfectly safe years and years ago when it first came out. And we all know what the horrible health effects of asbestos are, I'm sure. I'm sure everybody in this room knows what Cadillac is. When Cadillac came out with the four point six North Star engine, I think it was back in the nineties, the day, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. GM swore that that North Star engine would never leak a drop of oil. And if you've been underneath enough of those Cadillacs, you'll know that every single one of them does nothing but puke oil. Benzine, horrible poisons. One of the main ingredients in solar panels is silicon. Silicon is also one of the main ingredients in microchips and computers. The process to create silicon is highly toxic. I have a hard time believing that the silicon that's in these solar panels will not eventually leach out into the soil. They forgot to mention in their cute little presentation when they said that copper, glass, and steel that's made of the solar panels, that's one of the ingredients they forgot to mention. Lithium batteries highly toxic. And also, the other thing too is the training. If there was a fire back there, does our fire department have the training to put the fire out? And also the equipment, we need a foam truck. Plus, not to mention, if there was a fire there that would burn for up to fourteen days, I would be in the direct line of all that toxic smoke because of where I live, because of our winds that blow mainly from west to east. I certainly wouldn't want that. So those are just some of the things that I wanted to mention. I've heard all of the arguments about them being unsightly and being a nuisance to the town, and that's very valid, and I would agree. But also just wanted to touch on some of the environmental and the health aspects as well. I'm sure there's something I'm missing here, but, you know, again, like I said, there's so many things that throughout history that we were told were a hundred percent safe. They want to protect anybody's health whatsoever, that your children will be perfectly fine. We all know how that goes.
Thank you. Nice, come on. Don't be shy.
Hello. My name is Boris Pecov. I live on seventy-seven eighty, on the second driveway from the site. I can see the field from my kitchen window. I don't want to look at it. I have a concern about traffic that, you know, for maintenance, there's gotta be some kind of a maintenance going on. So it's gonna be trucks or vans going in and out all the time. I don't want that. The value of the houses all the way around, the whole neighborhood, it's gonna go down. So that's my concern and beyond record that I'm against it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just summarized one thing. I just want to say that this...
You need to step to the mic.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. It's just a real quick, I'm gonna keep it real short here. I just want everyone to... Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff Persanti, seven eight zero six Bettec Road. All the sweat equity that everybody put into their homes and their livelihoods, you guys can see. We hope that you're here representing the community as a whole on our behalf. I just want to say this. You let these people come in, it's gonna set a precedent that you're gonna have to all answer to for future situations because this is opening the floodgates. And what is gonna happen with the future of our community? I just want you to stay with that thought when you vote either yes or no on that. And please keep that in mind, and thank you for your time. I'll leave it at that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else that has not been talked about?
Dave Reco, four six two four North Boston Road. I've sat here all night, and I've heard everything, you guys all heard it. It's all the same stuff. There's not one person in this room that wants this to happen. There's no one here. Look around. Jeff doesn't want this next to his house. Look what it's going to do to his property. Look what it's gonna do to Bob's. Look what is gonna happen to our community. We are gonna lose our community. We open this up, we're looking at this, this is all around us. We're raising kids in this family. Do what's right. You know what you gotta do. Do what's right. Tell them to get out of here, tell them to go to some other place. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay? We're done? All right. Would you two like to come back up, please? Were you taking notes? Can you answer questions?
Fastidiously. Let me run through, and I'm gonna try to summarize because we have about twenty people speaking.
Okay, you know what? Hang on one sec because there's a few things that I wanted to just touch on, and you might be able to roll those in.
Sure.
How long does Delaware River Solar generally retain ownership of their solar farm once it's up and running?
Delaware River Solar is the contractor for the construction for this planning. The owner of the solar field is a much larger conglomerate. Bettec Road is owned by Bull Rock Renewables. They're the ones that have it for the life of the thirty years.
And they keep it for the thirty years?
Yeah, unless they sell it to another much larger company.
So I understood they changed hands.
It's usually, there's a couple of big ones. There's True Green, Henry, Bull Rock Renewables, they own the majority of the area.
And let me just say with the rooms in the audience, it's not uncommon that things get sold, right? You sell your house, you sell your business, you sell your car. And you, sometimes these projects are sold. And whatever agreements and whatever legal authority is in place carries through to that owner. It's not like a new owner comes in and they have a blank check and they can do whatever they want. They're still obligated to follow the laws, the conditions of the approvals, and the agreements that are entered into with the town. So we deal with this a lot where there are questions about ownership, and it's a fair question. But the fact that it may be sold has no bearing on this process.
I'd just like to know the process.
Of course, and it's a fair question.
So what exactly constitutes you being, and I'm speaking to you as the owner, all right? What constitutes you being a certified utility? Who designates that certification?
So the question relates to whether or not they were a regulated entity. So they have to go through and get approvals from the state. There's an ICERDA approval, there are other agency approvals, the Public Service Commission oversees the electricity, and ultimately, there's interconnections with whatever local utility it is, like the NICEG, National Grid, whatever the local utility is. So there's all oversight layers from the government, from those agencies, and their respective regulations that oversee this process. So the fact that it is regulated by those agencies designated by the state makes it a regulated utility under the case law.
But is it, is it NICEG the same as Delaware River Solar?
No, but we have to connect with the utility. We have to go into the, we have to plug into the grid, and we get approvals to do that. And once we're producing that energy, it's through that utility that has the oversight by the PSA.
So you're just a middleman?
Right. Yeah.
You're not a certified utility?
Nope. We are, we are...
I'm a yes for an owner, I'm not a national fuel. Same hood.
Yep, exactly.
Well, I'm trying to get to the bottom of whether or not you have these, these powers that...
Well, the courts have said yes, right? We, we...
Well, if the court said yes, they've said yes to utilities, to public utilities. I'm trying to establish if you're a public utility.
Yes, because Delaware River Solar, you heard about the town of Aurora, right? That was, that was a case that dealt with solar companies. We offered a number of decisions where the court applied its standard. And I want to point out, because there was a question by counsel about, well, you know, the third department case was a use variance. That's true. But there is a stock court case with our PNY, there was an area variance case. All of those cases, all of those solar companies held, PUV standard applies. We're no different. We're no different, and there have been cases by Delaware River Solar. Those are in the record, those are in the letters that we've authored. So that's already been determined. It is. The courts have determined that.
So why haven't variants been represented?
Because, you know, we've heard a lot of things about, well, you know, likely one gentleman, you know, said, "This is BS." We're, you know, it's the law. The law is that this is an allowable use. So we're not, we're not pulling the wool over anyone's eyes in the town. We're not coming in and trying to put a square peg in a round hole. The law allows this project. And the courts have held that this is... Well, if we could be fair, the law allows this project where you don't need a variance right now, right? Now you're five hundred feet, right? So that's the situation, right? There's two different concepts. There's use, there's use, which this is an allowable use. Yeah, I'm not arguing that. Right, no, 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 but there is a distinction. We are an allowed use. Yeah. So we don't need a use variance. So these comments about where it's gonna be, it should go up... I'm talking about the five hundred feet that you need that you don't have. That's, that's what we're talking about. And we need the variance.
Why do you need the setback? Why do you need the five hundred feet?
We need the setback because it's an irregular parcel. Can I, can I address the board without interruption? It's very hard to hear five different people talk.
Yeah, come on, you guys, we have manners.
We've been more than respectful to the board and to the public. We'd ask the same in return. You've had your moment, now it's ours.
Okay, let's move on.
The reason we need the variance is because this is an irregular parcel. It's not feasible for the project to go in, in the configuration that it needs to under the site plan without the variance.
Again, the extra variance for the twenty acres, what's that? You were trying to get for the seventy-some acres when it's only allowed at...
It's fifty versus, yeah. Our max, a maximum is fifty acres, and they're coming in with seventy.
And I think code enforcement, and again, I go back to my initial question to the board. I took it that code enforcement said, "We're in compliance with that." So I, I don't know, but to answer the question...
No, you're not in compliance. I told them, I told them to address.
Well, to address the question, same answer. We need, in order to be in, to configure the project the way it's been contemplated, we need the variance, both for the setbacks and for the acreage.
Is that, you're trying to go bigger once you get there? Is that what you're trying to do?
We're not trying to go bigger, what's contemplated is what's...
Why do you need the extra twenty acre variance?
They're trying to use the property so that they can set them up where they want.
Oh. The parcel is seventy acres, the entire parcel is. In your law, you can't have a parcel bigger than fifty. So if the parcel was fifty acres, we wouldn't need the variance, but it could still fit in the same location. It's just that the parcel is seventy-three and seventy. It's not that you're trying to gain any more acreage or anybody's trying to put anything else on it. There's nothing else proposed on this property. It's just this location, the twenty-three acre difference is because your code only allows it up to fifty acres.
All right, have they considered the wind and the snow load that's up there on that hill?
Correct, these are tracker panels, so they move. They're on a twenty-four monitor, twenty-four hour, twenty-seven day a week monitoring system. That monitoring system monitors the weather, it also has a weather meter also. So if you're gonna get a storm of any kind, then they're gonna gauge the wind and it's gonna gauge the snow. So if it's just a snowstorm, they'll just tip up so that the snow doesn't fall out now. If it's a windstorm, they might go flat because there's too much wind. But they're smart panels. It's a, they have weather trackers on them and they are monitored so that they can actually, people can, the monitoring company can actually move the, according to the weather.
What's the maximum height of the panels?
These ones are gonna be sixteen feet, I believe.
So for the noise levels, and what I read here, it said that it would be, quote, "Approximately seventy decibels." So what is the accurate amount? What is the accurate number? Because there's decimal meters, I can't believe that you wouldn't be able to give us an exact decimal.
We provided the sound studies from Sundry in our submission documents to the board, and we can send them again. They are seventy to eighty decimals. They are 70 to 80 decibels at the inverter. And then we actually did that color coding and it tells you how many decibels, what everything sounds like. So it's related to like a blender. We have seen in other communities to put sound walls around the inverters. That can also happen. That's not shown on this plan, but it can be shown on the plan. About 150 feet away from the inverter, depending on where you are, it snakes down to about 20 decibels, which is just a normal person talking.
And did they factor into that the sound when it's traveling uphill? Because this is on a slope.
Right. And they're all different. They didn't, that sound study that we sent is static. It's not based on terrain values and whatnot.
So it'd be louder?
It could be louder, yeah. And that's why we say the sound system or the sound boards around it.
Yeah, I asked for an accurate number because I looked some things up. And, you know, examples of 80 decibels were a diesel truck going 40 miles an hour, a freight train, a tractor, and a food blender, which you said was 70 decibels. So, and this was all from a report provided, because I want to give my footnotes here, to the Department of Civil and Environmental Engineering by the Federal Interagency Committee on Noise. And it also documented that 80 decibels was literally twice as loud as 70 decibels and that it would incur possible damage with an eight-hour exposure. So that's why I asked for an accurate decibel level, not an approximate, because that's a big difference.
Right. And we sent you the sound studies and we gave the location and what it is. I mean, depending on the type of blender and the type of different things.
But it wasn't specific, I guess, is what I'm saying. You know, I'd read a deal with real numbers, especially when there's, you know, equipment available to give you that, so that everybody gets the full answer. Also, it says that you're going to drill to a depth of three and a half feet in the EAF that you filled out. And it also stated that the water table is at three and a half feet. So some people still rely on wells up there in that area, which are fed by the water table. So that means that every time you drill, you're going to be interfering with another area of the water table and thereby affecting the wells that people are still using.
If there's a vein in the area, then there may be, but we do do well monitoring as well.
And how many homes would this solar farm power?
That is in, also the information that we submitted. This is about three and a half megawatts, so somewhere in the neighborhood of 615 homes.
And then it stated repeatedly in what I read that the piles of excess excavated materials will be stockpiled on the site for use when it's decommissioned. So that would be 30 years?
You have to do that according to the NICEG regulations. So according to NICEG and anything that has, this is not prime pharma and it's prime pharma day three. And you're not allowed to have taken any topsoil off of the property according to NICEG. It has to be reused as part of their mitigation procedures.
And then I was questioning, what is the suitable timeframe to reseed the disturbed beds and soils to prevent erosion?
As part of the SWIFT documents, we can only disturb five acres at a time and then you have to reseed and stabilize. So they'll be reseeding and stabilizing the entire time that they're out there in order to do the five acres at a time.
Like in how many days?
How many days?
Because there were different options. I read seven days, I read 14 days.
Well, they'll seed it in a day, but it takes days to germinate.
Oh, absolutely.
And then they put hay down the same day so that the birds don't eat it and they can germinate into the ground.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because you were, you know, make sure that you realize that you're bulldozing topsoil that has been cultivated for hundreds of years as farms.
There might not be that much excavation. In some areas, there won't be excavation either. So it really depends on the grading time that's there. But there will be excavation and then they will be cultivating that soil.
And then when it's decommissioned and you put the soil back, it's not going to be the same soil. I mean, you're going to have, it's, it's going to, it's been dormant for all those years, so then the nutrients, it's not going to be the same. It's not like you're going to be putting it back the way you found it because it's not going to happen. I don't think this is being a good steward of the land. I mean, and that's what we're called to do as owners, as residents.
But see, this goes back to the comments earlier about the use. That's not what the board's hold upon for the purposes of the area there.
No, but I'm sharing my view.
No, you're entitled to that.
I know I am.
But I feel, I feel that you need to make a record as to guiding the board as far as legally what you're operating through and rest.
I had a question about the irregular shape of the parcel.
I'm sorry. I just can't agree. Can you repeat your question? Not over the background, no, I can't.
There were people talking.
Okay. All right. If we could just settle down out there, folks, that'd be great. Thank you. I have a question about the irregular shape of the parcel. This is our, this is our map that we have. Can you, so I see it's, I guess, is this what you mean by irregular? Or could you just tell me what you mean by irregular shape?
Well, yeah. I mean, it's not a perfect rectangle. It's not a perfect square.
Okay. So back here where you have all the solar panels, that looks pretty square to me. So why couldn't we just remove these two panels up here so it doesn't really affect the, you know, you're not interfering with the irregular shape?
Because that's not how the project's been configured. So when the project's been configured...
Should we reconfigure? That's the question.
It's not as simple as that.
We would still need a variance.
Okay. So then, if, if you need a variance, the point back here, the fattest part of the core of the parcel, maybe it doesn't fit.
That is a very practical question.
So I mean, you have a number of applications before. You had the car wash for a use variance. You had the two women here for an area variance. The variance process exists to get exceptions to the existing code. So that's, that's why we're here.
It's a balancing process, what we've established.
Well, it's not a balancing process for public utilities.
Is it?
Oh, really?
It's tipped a little, but it's still a balancing process, is what I heard.
My interpretation, I mean, the court decision, the appellate division did indicate that there was aesthetic environmental considerations still needed to be evaluated. But because it's a public utility, in my opinion, you know, there, it tips the scales for the project.
It tips, but it doesn't determine, right?
You don't go through the same factors. There's no balancing. Once the public utility necessity is met, the analysis is done.
I don't feel that's the counsel that we're getting from our attorney. So I guess it's a professional difference, I guess.
We certainly can have a difference on opinion, but I have the court case here. It doesn't go through the factors of the town law.
I have it here too.
Yeah.
It speaks to this in the particular case. They didn't identify particular aesthetic or environmental concerns in the record. They pointed to negative declaration. Albert also said, while these aesthetic concerns in potential environmental impact might, this is on page four, might be paramount relative to certain other electric generating utilities on this record, be similar in preference. So that's saying, in this instance, the record did not have aesthetic or potential environmental impacts that were in the record that would tip it any other direction, but it left the question open. On the bottom of page four.
Yeah, I have the case in front of me. I disagree with the analysis. They pointed to the neg deck because the neg deck is what governs. Once the negative declaration is rendered, the environmental review aspects are concluded. You know, certainly the ZVA couldn't make a determination contrary to that neg deck. Once the neg deck is, is out there and it's made, it governs. It binds every other decision for the project. But I think...
With respect to the environmental considerations that are received, this also adds aesthetic considerations, I think, are beyond...
And I...
Which are not fully within the...
But aesthetics also go to use. And if it's an allowable use, you know, I don't know how...
It goes to it, but it isn't...
Well, you put two lawyers in a room, you'll naturally get disagreement. But I think to, to the board member's question about the balancing, I just want to be clear. I think you're talking about the five balancing factors under town law that you've applied in the other applications. Those aren't relevant here.
Okay. So I'll ask our attorney. What factors do we use then? Has that been determined by the courts?
It has not been, there has not been any extensive analysis of that. All I can rely on is the, what we call the door that the court, in this instance, left open regarding the record. It referred to aesthetic and environmental considerations. If I'll get your five usual factors, those, you know, I think those go towards some aesthetic and environmental considerations. I would agree that those factors that were the subject of the negative declaration are, that's in the record. And so that would limit, I think, the degree which environmental issues could be...
Okay.
But to answer the question about what standard, I'll direct the board to our December 16, 2024 letter, page three. There's a big paragraph there from the Hoffman case. And the Hoffman case came from the state's highest court and it dictated what a public utility is. And here are the three factors that the courts used. One, the essential nature of the services offered, which must be taken into account when regulations seek to limit the expansion of those services, facilities which provide those services. Two, that the operation is subject to some public regulation, which is the dialogue that we had. And three, that there are logistical problems that prevent or otherwise limit that service and there's no alternative. Those are what the courts look to in determining a public utility variance. That is the standard. All of courts cite to it because Hoffman is the case that set that standard forth. So to the extent there's a question about what do you look to, that's it. And you take that and you look to the necessity of the electrical production that's necessary, as has been applied to similar cases, and that's what you apply.
But what is the necessity? Because we've already got NICEG.
The necessity is the state has dictated a clean energy, renewable energy goal within the next, you know, 10, 20, 30, 40 years.
That's not specific to the town of Boston.
No, no, no.
They already met the goal.
But they met the goal. You guys, I was really polite when you were talking, wasn't I? All right.
The state has not met those goals yet because the deadlines have not come. It's 20, 30, 40, and 50 goals to reach this huge production of renewable energy. That state dictated policy is the necessity. Is the necessity.
So when this all started, it was a different political climate.
I'm sorry, when what all started?
This application.
Okay.
So now there's, there's a new sheriff in town. Do you see anything coming down the road?
Not in New York State, there's not. Not in New York State, there's not. The state...
How many more years does she have?
Doesn't matter. We have an application today with the law that we have to look at today. What might happen?
I'm asking your opinion.
Yeah, my opinion is the laws haven't changed. The courts have spoken. The state policy hasn't changed.
Those are statements. That's not your opinion.
Could I, could I interrupt?
I don't see a distinction.
No. Could I ask our attorney again? The Hoffman case, the three criteria for the Hoffman case? Do we have a different opinion on that? A different interpretation?
In my opinion, so, in my opinion, the controlling decision is the recent dollar court decision with respect to these cases. This case assessed the Hoffman case among others.
Because that's just one opinion.
It's a binding opinion.
Hoffman's binding and this is binding and this interpreted binding and Hoffman in this case. In the record that was on the project in this case, the local PS panel addressed aesthetic and environmental concerns. The record did not demonstrate the issues with respect to the project. It left the door open where on another record, aesthetic concerns and potential environmental impacts could impact the decision.
Okay.
I would, I mean, would, would you say, I mean, would you say that, that you think could ask for a 500-foot variance on this? Go right to the road?
That's not what we're asking for.
I know, but...
I'm not going to, respectfully, but I'm not going to gauge in hypothetical that they're not what the application is seeking. But on aesthetics...
The court left the door open. It's not wide open. It's a crack. But it's not fully closed.
It's always gray area, but I think, I think...
That's my point. That's my point.
I think, I think if you read Hoffman and if you read Freepoint Solar, which is the third department case, and you read the cases that we offered in our submission, there were quite a few of them, one of which dealt with an area variance, it's quite clear that the PUV...
Well, here's the thing. We're not lawyers. So as far as I'm concerned, I feel drawn to our traditional five criteria that we use because there has not been a new New York state mandated five criteria to deal with with these new things. So with this new kind of change and opportunity, utility situation, I think that leaves us in a very large gray area. And so I would prefer to, you know, revert to tradition until we get more information, when we get more court cases, you know? There you go.
I would, I would, I would defer to Dwight to advise you, as I'm not your counsel, but I would strongly urge the board not do that. There have been, you can laugh, I urge the board because there have been so many cases that have addressed this that we've offered, including in an area variance. You can't say that there's not enough. You have a number of trial level courts and you now have an appellate court decision that relies on the Court of Appeals, the state's highest court.
That leaves the door open for aesthetic situations.
So it's really...
And you're asking for big variance.
That's also not, the size of the variance isn't relevant to the analysis.
Size is...
It's not. It's not. There's no mention of any size, any percentage, any quantify of any variance for the public utility variance.
Well, here's a question. Would you be willing to make it smaller?
I don't know that it could be configured in that way because naturally, if it could, I think it would. It's very diff, once these projects are configured and you get certain approvals and you start mapping things out, the project has to be a certain size based on the approvals it's received. So to make it, to adjust it, will be difficult.
Oh, I get it. So in order to get your money, you have to have it a certain size? Is that pretty much? I don't, I'm not being sarcastic. Is it, is it tied to funding somehow?
The project is configured in a way that it will be the most beneficial and provide, fulfill the necessity. Because like anybody, if you're going to go in and you want to build a certain size, you're going to ask for that. The difference is, is the public utility variance standard here dictates, and we're talking a lot on aesthetics, but really, that's at the planning board stage. That's not a variance, you know, consideration.
Can we go back to the parcel and the topography of the parcel? And it maybe, again, the size, the configuration of the parcel, the topography of the parcel? It's, again, I stand by my statement. again, I, I stand by my statement. It just doesn't seem to fit for this particular parcel with the configuration of the whatever size you need to be in the topography, the different hilly situations we have going. It, it doesn't seem to fit.
The way it's configured fits. That's why.
If you, if you get the variance.
Sure.
Has the board contemplated any kind of variance or distance that might be palatable to the board? Let's talk.
Well, I want everyone else's questions answered here first. And to be quite honest, I'm not exactly sure where that is because I've driven past it. I sat on the road and I looked. But you know what? Everything's under snow. There's no stakes. There's no tape. That's the normal procedure for when we have a zoning board application. You have to know where it is. And honestly, it's the tundra out there. There's no, there's, there's nothing to show where that property actually is. So I would like to walk that property.
Okay. We'd have to ask the homeowner. I'm sure he'd be open to it. Are there other questions you want to discuss?
Um, yeah, actually, because it has, it was touched on here, but why, why aren't other sites considered like brownfields? Because we have so many of them. Or the medians of the expressway? Or rooftops? Or parking lot garages?
They're all considered. What happens is, is you have a substation. Substation can only handle so much electric going into it. So there might be 3, 4, 8, 10 kilowatts that can go into, or excuse me, megawatts that can go into a substation. So what has to happen is a piece of property has to line up with a three-phase line that goes to an available substation. If the substation isn't available to take on the electricity, then that property can't be used. So what they do is they take 10-acre parcels and they look at the electricity maps, NISEC, Orange Rockland, Central Hudson. They look at the substations, where that three-phase line comes out to, how much the substation can handle. If there's a substation that's open with a lot that goes near it, that has a three-phase line near it, that's the, all the factors that have to come together. So there are several properties that will not work because they're just not near a substation. They're not near a three-phase line. So you see a lot of vacant parcels, a lot of areas that may be considered and may be good, but they're not close enough to the substation to even run a line to them.
So why isn't the topography of this particular parcel being considered along those lines of interconnectedness and, and connection to a substation? Why is this parcel considered okay to use, um, from, from your standpoint, with the topography the way it is?
Because the racking systems have changed. So the racking systems that hold the solar panels aren't north-south anymore. They used to be north-south and they used to be on a triangular base and they should just sit there. So if you had a really hilly site, you couldn't use it if it's over 15% slope. You'd have to really, you know, dig out the property and it was way too cost prohibitive and whatnot. Now they're on single panel, single H-posts and they move. So the solar panels track with the sun and they go east-west. So you can actually build on a 30% grade now instead of building on a 10% grade.
Thank you.
So your technology has evolved also with the solar farms?
Correct.
So what do you think the next thing is going to be?
Nuclear.
Fly far.
Nuclear, yeah. Yeah.
There was a question about what the board thought would be a reasonable.
Well, I'd like them to answer the questions that were brought up because we're still talking about a solar panel farm. So.
I just want to mention, when you're talking about substations and whatnot, some of the things that we see across the state is that, you know, any, there's a lot of companies. There's a lot of companies looking at the solar in. And where a substation is open, that's where everybody's going to be looking to. So they'll just be continued looking. Like everybody's talking about, they're going to look for different properties that they can connect to and whatnot. This individual property owner we've been working with for a while, he's a really nice guy. I know he's trying to do the best by his neighbors and whatnot. And he actually left because he was very upset about different things and this hurts him too. So I know that he wants to work with the board and he wants to work with his community members in order to come to a resolve. So one question that I had is whether or not I could get a recording just so I could go back through all the questions in case I miss something? Is that something that?
Once it becomes available.
Then we can get it. Okay. Because we just want to make sure that we answer all the questions and try and work with as many people as we can, try and screen or do what needs to be done. And I know that the homeowner's wishes are the same.
What other questions have we not answered?
Um, I told you to take notes.
Oh, you meant, I, I thought you meant question.
I know. We're ready for, we're ready for the answers to their questions.
I'm going to run through and, and to Molly's point, I think the recording would be helpful, but she and I took notes. So one of the.
Can you talk into the mic, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm going sort of as I see them. So one of the questions was, well, if this is approved, what else would be built? Well, whatever you approve is what could be built. We can't go ahead and build something else. In that line of questioning, they said, well, might they build a battery storage front? One, that's not an application, in the application, it is not contemplated. You'd have to approve that. There is no battery storage. That's a very different project. There's no battery here. There was questions about maintenance. There is, I think, offered with the materials in O and M plan. That plan goes through in, in quite a bit of depth. What type of maintenance will go through, will happen, in what intervals, as far as taking care of the project and everything related to the project. What benefit to the community? You've heard, you know, us explain that there is the availability for the subscriber credits. That's handled by a third party. It's not handled by DRS. That has to be handled separately. Obviously, the creation of any type of property, that's a tax generating property, it, it allows for tax revenue, whether it be in the form of tax dollars or pilots, if this is a pilot eligible community. So those would be some of the benefits, as well as more grid resiliency. Obviously, if we increase the ability to have more grid power, it reduces the possibility of brownouts or blackouts. You've heard Molly mention over.
I, I remember reading something about that. I don't recall ever having a blackout.
Yeah, it, it may not have happened.
I've been here 41 years. Never.
Sure. I, I, we're all different. But by supporting the grid, I live in Erie County. I've lost power. It happens. May not have happened here. I, I've been, I've lived through several blackouts and brownouts. So by supporting the grid, it helps avoid that, not only in the immediate community, but because that power is going into the grid, it has, it, it creates that, that insulation. There was talk about fire training and I know there was a gentleman from the fire company who was here.
He's still here.
Oh, is he?
Yep.
There was a letter that was sent to the fire company back in August of last year.
Which one? Which fire company?
We have three. Boston. We sent it to Boston.
It's.
It's vast.
It's North Boston district.
It, perhaps it was the wrong address, but there was something that was sent out. Again, we would meet with the fire department. We've done that a lot. We do a lot of different trainings and we want their input prior to, we usually get their input prior to the close of the project. There was also a lot of discussion about glare. Solar panels are, have an anti-glare coating and they also have to be FAA approved, which means that they can't have glare outside of airplanes and whatnot. So they have to be non-significant in the FAA.
So going back to the fire company, um, so is a foam truck needed? Do you contribute to the equipment that's necessary?
I've not seen.
If there was a fire, you know, that they would have.
I have not seen that a foam truck is necessary nor that anybody's asked for them. What we normally get asked for is ATVs and other specific equipment that the fire department needs. The town can enter into a pilot or a host benefit agreement. And the host benefit agreement is usually based on the amount of megawatts that are here. And that's a direct payment to the town in order to give that money back as they see fit for parks, recreation, fire department. So if there is something that the fire department needs, that's something we discuss with them. We outfitted a fire department with an ATV with all the equipment, with the stretchers and all of that stuff. They don't, a lot of the fire departments that we've dealt with don't specifically ask us for equipment to handle the solar field. They ask us for equipment for their everyday use and other more, the emergencies they have more often.
If I may, often, fire departments when they assess these projects, well, one of the concerns will be how you do emergency retrieval between the rows, the rows of panels and that's where the ETVs come in and assist the emergency response, often in the rural areas. I do a lot of rural areas.
Those are the questions that I had that didn't deal with aesthetics, that didn't deal with some of the things that, you know, I think are more of a planning board concern, but also not, not an area's concern.
What about the grounding? I asked about are they grounded? Do you follow I triple E 19 and 215B and Rule 92D?
So when the project is built, assuming it gets the necessary approvals, it has to pull permits from the town. The town will inspect it. There will be a number of signals that are required. This, this doesn't happen without those approvals, without that permitting, without compliance of all the applicable regulations.
What about the, the stray, uh, ground?
Consider what filters on for the stray current. That is a question on the inverters, is what causes the stray current.
There are, because this is an electric generating facility, there are a number of failsafes and faults. Just, you know, I'm going to analogize it to something simple. A lot of people understand. You have a bathroom outlet, you have a sink outlet in the kitchen. It's a GFCI outlet. It's a ground fault circuit interrupter. If that gets wet, it's going to shut off. That is a, to analogize to the failsafes for this project, there are a number of failsafes that are reported. The system will shut down if there are any errors. There, it is obviously grounded because it's electric generating. So all of those are required by the applicable codes and signed off by the town and, and other agencies. So.
So you can prove that you comply with the, with the I triple E 19?
We will prove compliance with all the necessary regulations that were required to comply with, to pull building permits. I, I don't know the specific citations that you offer, ma'am.
It's a, it's a, a law in New York State that you have to comply and a lot of solar farms don't. So that's why I'm mentioning it.
I'm not aware of other non-compliance, but I know.
Do you know what this is?
I, I'm familiar with the National Electric Code as it applies to New York State. I'm not an electrician. I'm not an engineer. When I make, when we make our application for those permitting, trusted the engineers, the electricians, and those who are co-enforcement, will sign off on that. And, and obviously if they don't, then they identify an issue.
And then they have to check it every so often to make sure that it's not.
The only thing I have to add is that we will do a thorough plan review and make sure that all codes and local laws are met, including inspections by qualified inspectors like electro inspection and that, um, that the footings for, for the solar fields. So everything will be followed and if it doesn't meet the standard, not going to pass, like anything else.
Right.
All right. So now Bethany, you had questions?
Um, you mentioned that you, you asked us, and maybe I'll, you asked us, the board, if, um, if we had a number in mind that would kind of meet in the middle type of situation.
Yeah, that is palatable.
Okay. Or, what do you think? Do we have a number in mind?
I don't. I have to, I have to look at it.
We have to see it.
I'm going to have to see it.
I just want to add that the solar field, the larger portion on the left, depending on how you're looking at, the larger conglomerate there.
This guy over here?
Yep. We keep on talking about 134 and 160 meter feet, but that one, that end one is 250 feet from the northern property line. So the variance requests that we ask for are the smallest because we have to make sure that we can get to the smallest there. But they vary throughout that line because it's obviously not straight. So I just wanted to say that some of the fields meets the 250, some of it meets 300, some of it meets 116. So just so you know, as it goes across. No, it'll have to be 500. I'm saying, what I'm saying is that the, the distance we need for the variance varies, but we have to ask for the most stringent.
Yes. Well, I think our first order of business is to actually see the property with the lines, with the stakes, with the takeoff.
Absolutely.
And that would be up to the owner to get that done for us. And with the snow, I don't know when that would happen.
I think we got some warmth, warmth coming in the next week, fingers crossed. The 55-degree day was a tease. In addition to that, I just want to just reiterate what I reiterated earlier about the housekeeping matters, that the GMEL 239 emeritus, and then when we come back around the next time, that the public hearing always refer to the, the acreage, just, just so we're all.
Yeah. I directed.
Was it 239 emeritus?
Correct.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see that. Why, so maybe.
I'll, I'll check.
Okay.
Was there something about Eden too? What do we have to do with that?
Municipal boundary.
This is a.
I would trigger the 239.
Yeah. Just like we had to do before she did.
Okay.
Well, I, I thought that had already been done, but.
If it is, great. But I just, I didn't see.
I don't know. When we were discussing this before, it came to my attention that I didn't get a lot of the information that was available. So Dwight's going to send it on to me. So.
It sounded like not all of the state.
No, it didn't.
And that's a lot of mapping too, because we want to see where these arrays are going. You're going to have to have that staked out, not just, hey, we're putting it in here. It's the footprint of everything.
Do you have a set of the full-size prints?
No. I don't.
I know there were ones.
And I found it very difficult to read.
There are full-size sets. I'm almost positive.
There, there were originally, I don't know if it's got, but there were, I know there were.
I do have a full-size set here if you'd like me to leave it for you right then or I can send one of the.
It would be great if you could leave it for us. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Make reference to it then.
I have a question.
I have to come up to the microphone. Sorry.
Yeah, my name is Boris P. Cupp, 7780 Fettick. All the properties of these folks here will be affected value-wise. I want to know if you're prepared to pay the difference of the loss. I mean, if my house is $200,000 and it goes down 150, will they give me 50,000?
Well, I'm sure they will.
You know? I mean, I'm not alone. All these folks are affected.
I could probably speak on their behalf and say no.
Then I say no to that.
I'll just say, um, besides the obvious, you know, we could put 10 appraisers in a room and get 10 different things. The whole property value thing really is speculative and, you know, some people don't like being next to them. I realize, I realize, I realize that that's not the case in this room. I realize that's not the case in this room, but it's, it's far too speculative.
I saw that on Hazel. They sold, they sold it to a deaf guy. The house on the highway that was real loud, they sold it to a deaf guy. So.
No, no comment.
So can we leave the microphone?
Yeah, come in there. We have another question over here.
I'm so sorry.
You're careening like, like eating here. Yes. Something that hasn't been repeated and something that applies. Those are my two criteria.
Thought I heard them mention that there would be the sound of a buzz of a blender if you stood at the property line.
150 feet, I believe, is what they quoted and it would be, it would sound like a blender.
So if anyone were to walk the property line.
Can you state your name and address again?
I'm sorry. Lawrence Stiller, Keller Road, Hamburg, New York. So if anyone were to walk the property line or be at the property boundary where this project is, they could hear a 24/7 blender buzz sound. Is that correct?
Not at night.
If I may, and, and that one thing it didn't have was the noise assessment. I believe this 70 to 80 decibel was at the inverter.
Correct.
Only 150 feet from the inverter in this 27 decibel. I believe that might be accurate and then it answers for that.
What about if properties, if people in homes who would be able to hear?
Right. The blender level of 70 feet decibel, right at the inverter, the, at, at 150 feet from the inverter, according to the study, was 47 decibels, which is probably the level of our conversation.
Less than.
I'm tired of that.
47.
I don't know what the decibel level of louder would be. I'm just wondering, I, it could be property owners who are next to this project, who are going to be in their home and be able to hear 24/7, the sound equivalent to the decibel level of a buzzer from a blender running 24/7. Is that what I heard?
The inverter doesn't run at night. It only, the inverter only runs during daylight hours. So 24/7.
Only when you're at 24. 16/7?
Excuse me?
What would be the, how often are we going to hear this sound?
If, if I might, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
There's a noise study and the board has it. We've addressed the best we can the question. With due deference, you know, a public hearing is to be making statements. It's not technically a Q and A session. We've been robust in our responses, but given the hour, we're leaving the public hearing open, I take it. I think the board has some materials to review. We can address things in writing, but I feel like we can keep going round and round. And no matter what we say or do, we're going to just keep getting peppered with questions. I think we're getting to the.
No, I think we're wrapping it up, but I want everyone to be satisfied that they had their time.
Sure. And again, the inverter will not be running at night.
Because that's how I run a meeting. Because I'm running this meeting.
You're the chair. You're running the meeting. But technically, as the applicant, we don't have to get that, go with the back and forth. The inverter will not be running at night. I would refer the board to the noise study. It seems in your discussions with Dwight, maybe you didn't have that available to you. But we would happily address noise questions after we review that in the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. You can sit down.
One further thing. Can I quickly ask one further thing? Do I understand that the five criteria that normally would have been considered if this were not a public utility?
Yes. Correct. And we read that out loud in the beginning of the meeting so everybody could understand the differences.
So why are we here?
Because it is a public.
Because they're a utility.
And, and what do we have to get from the board?
Because they want variances. And that's what they're here for. They're seeking relief from the code. So they're looking for.
So and if the code were to say.
But it doesn't. It doesn't.
Okay. Now what if the board were to reject this application now?
Yes.
We could sue. We could sue. What's going to happen?
I don't know.
Can we see that?
What do you ask?
It's not over yet. Okay.
To me, it's a slam dunk from the perspective.
All right. Is, you guys?
I, I don't know.
Call to order here. Bob?
I just want one quick.
I just want one quick question. I just need one thing clarified, because I had a state assemblyman and somebody else tell me that the big solar projects and the big windmill projects, they call them 94C projects. And those projects there can pretty much tell you what they're gonna do. This here is a very small 2.3 or 3.2, whatever, small project, this is considered a small project. And he says that they have to abide by all the town codes and rules. So I'd like Dwight, Ms. Baker, and whoever look into that to see if that's true or if somebody's telling me it's not the truth. But if that's the truth, there should be no, no variances for distance. They gotta follow the codes. So I'd like to have that in writing and clarified, to show me that they.
I've provided that.
Yeah? I'd like to do that.
All right, hearing no others, we are going to leave this public hearing open. We will reconvene on the first Thursday in April at 7:00 PM. We'll start our work session downstairs, then we'll come back up, and I know there's already somebody else on the.
The third.
The horseshoe hill.
Horseshoe hill.
Coming up, I know, so. Same bat time, same bat station, folks, I would make a motion to leave the hearing open.
Any good?
Or no, we're leaving it open?
I'll second that.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Zelinski?
Yes.
Ms. Ruth?
Any other business to be conducted? Old, new, make a motion to close.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Zelinski?
Yes.
Ms. Ruth? Ms. Ruth?
Yes.